Welcome to the 3:00 PM August 28th City Council Meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Councilmember Westman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morgan.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. It'll take us to closed session. We'll be back at 4:00 PM.
Did you want to take public comment?
Public comment for anybody? Ain't none? Move on to our closed session. Good afternoon. It's 4:00 PM. We'll call our 3 o'clock meeting back into session. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Orbach.
Present.
Councilmember Westman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morgan.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. I think it's always going to be a good City Council meeting when you see the surfboards in the audience, so... With that said, would everybody please stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes to the agenda this afternoon.
Bring us to item 3, presentations.
Mayor, do you mind if we take a brief two-minute break? The sound isn't transmitting through our broadcasting service.
Great, two-minute break.
I will note that there are no presentations this evening.
Recording in progress.
Sounds like we're a go.
Yep, good to go.
Thank you. Bring up item 4, report on closed session.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and community. On item 2 in closed session, council has authorized the city to join in the Purdue-Sackler settlement as well as the settlement in the Alvagen-Amneal-Apotex-Hickma-Invidiaor-Mylan-Sun-Anzitas settlement. In layperson's terms, those are settlements reached in between public agencies and the pharmaceutical industries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5, additional materials.
Staff received additional materials for tonight's agenda. Item 8D, one email was received after publication of the agenda packet. Item 9A, 17 emails were received after publication of the agenda packet. In addition, staff distributed a memo with an updated version of the proposed ordinance. Item 9B, one email was received after publication of the agenda packet. Staff distributed a memo with an updated attachment for the item. Item 9C, four emails were received after publication of the agenda packet. Item 9D, one email was received after publication of the agenda packet. Item 9E, two emails were received after publication of the agenda packet. Staff distributed a memo with attachments to the report. Item 9F, one email was received after publication of the agenda packet. All materials are available for public review online and in the back of the room in our hard copy packet.
Thank you. I'll bring us to oral communications by a member of the public. You'll have up to three minutes to speak, and remember, this is not on the bud band. That'll be on our agenda. So things are not on the agenda.
Mr. -
Thank you.
Do you want to set any time limits or see hands?
I'm going to save that for the bud band.
I'm the first one in line.
There's quite a few people here. Let me, let me take a poll here.
If you want to go first, I'll honor that, but I was in line. I don't know. But I'll, it's fine if you go first, ma'am.
Thank you for that, James. I just want to see a hand of who all is going to speak on just public comment. Just not the bud band. Okay, great. You'll have up to three minutes. When we go to the bud band, we may limit the speaking time, but thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Sheehan. I'm not here about - it sounds so funny to say bud band. I'm here about the traffic on Bay Avenue, specifically right in front of Nob Hill and the Senior Center and the Woodworm area. So I first want to introduce myself. I'm a second-generation Santa Cruzian. That's how you say it? Both my parents were born here. And I have strong ties to Capitola. My, if any of you are familiar with Windmill House, it's underneath the ridge by the river. That was my great-grandfather who built that. It's called the House that Jack Built. That's my great-grandfather, Jack Carroll. So we have strong ties to Capitola. And I distinctly remember riding the merry-go-round where Zeldas is now. So anyway, I feel very strongly about how Capitola is run, how it functions, and how it works with its community. That said, the reason I'm here is that I am the past, immediate past president and currently on the board of the Mid-County Senior Center. And as past president, quite a few members have come to me and asked if I could come and say something about the traffic. They're having a very hard time. Not just the members, but we rent it out about three times a week, and that's a big part of our revenue. So that's guests and renters. They have a very hard time getting out of that parking lot that is shared with the Senior Center, and then the front of it is Woodworm. It's almost a possible turn left, because I'm there a couple of times a week, and it really is. It's also hard to turn right, because everybody's in two lanes off the freeway, and then they both have - Everybody can watch my hand. Two lanes off the freeway, they both have to go into one. And then people here trying to come in from the driveway have to go into those two lanes and get into - so it's almost three lanes into one, if you think about it. I'm trying to explain it. So most people do what I do. I turn right when I can and go through the parking lot of the Nob Hills supermarket, which is not good for the supermarket or parking there as well. But with that said, we're just concerned about the way the traffic is going and how it's going to impact us in the future, because we do use that center, gosh, seven days a week. Also, I'd just like to put a little plug in, if I may, for Woodworm Party Store, because they're our partners. We share a driveway. We share a lot of things in common. My daughter works there, to be honest. That's one thing. But as the president of the Senior Center, they came to us and asked how they could support us. They helped us get the Red Cross with a blood drive to our center so that we can have people come and see our center, enjoy their facility, and learn about the different activities we provide for the community. And this is their big time right now. I'm talking about the proposed closure of the freeway. This is Halloween, and it sounds crazy. I know it's August, but they have their signs up, and they have all their costumes up and et cetera. And it's very hard, as I just said, to get in and out of that driveway. Well, now, if it's their big time of year and when they get most of their, much of their income, nobody can get in there, and I know that's my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Can we move the timer? Oh, I can see the timer. Yeah, hello. My name is James Ewing Whitman. It's nice to be here again. Took some time to review the July 24th meeting and then the June 12th meeting. I really want to thank Roseanne Stanley for her comments. We had two hours, 10 minutes for what she said about the Measure L, the Coastal Rail Trail. I believe that's item number 11 on the consent agenda. Hope people really figure out how to get you guys to work with them and not support what you're supporting. So this came up recently, maybe a month ago. I'm just going to read it into the record. It says, um, "It's just many examples of seditious treason." Not in this room. I'll get to that. "It is horrifying and blatant conflict of interest that harms the safety and security of all Americans. There should not be this much overlap between private tech and the US government, certainly not between private tech and the US military. I do not know how deep the wheel at Congress can possibly be, but they should be shutting down this immediately, and every single one of us should be demanding that they do so. People who are using the government against you are now taking over our military. The corruption is calculated and staggering. I can only hope that our veterans and active-duty military are paying incredibly close attention. And now that you know, you should be talking about it." This has to do with the four billionaires that were made lieutenant colonels. There's 26 military ranks below that. I don't really know how much I want to talk about seditious treason, but it's - I do appreciate the commentary I was looking over, because it took me less than an hour to - no, I feel I was a thousand times more powerful with stating things that I'd been stating in the supervisors' meeting and the city council. You know, I read three books into the public record. One was Murdered by Injection by Justice Mullins. Talks about the new name of the fourth branch of government that they were saying was established in 1856. That's even before this maritime admiralty law pirate flag came in in 1871. You stand outside, and that's a different US and California flag, very different legal meanings. And it's sad that the current president, the Jesuit Zionist Bolshevik Nazi Donald J. Trump, is in such poor condition. You know, the 2013 graduate of Skull and Bones, who now calls himself J.D. Vance, may be in the White House for 11 years. That's pretty horrific. So I made a mistake, and I love to make mistakes. This person who wrote this was really quite powerful and really quite bold. And of course, it was a woman, because they seem to have more strong guts than most of the men I'm around.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Goran Klapej. I'm former security guard of Zeldas on the beach. I've worked the front door with my black brother, George. He did a good job. During that time span, I witnessed how certain people from Bay Bar were involved in massive cocaine trafficking scandal. I talked to Andrew Dally. I was good friends, by the way, with Andrew Dally back then. He was the police chief previously to Sarah Ryan here, and Sarah Ryan is now the police chief. So what I'm saying here is I have been to Jade Street Park to play basketball, because my foot hurts. It's broken. I think a vehicle tried to hit me or something, but I was returning from Jade Street Park. And to make it even worse, it just makes me more angry. I'm not threatened if I receive threats, you know, after I speak here intelligently in front of the council here and speak my mind. Thank you very much for listening. God bless you all.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Linda Smith, and I'd like to speak about the elephant in the room. We have an issue with transparency and community engagement that has become untenable for many of our residents. Meeting notices are barely meeting the minimum requirements, and schedule changes are confusing and frustrating for those who want to engage. Even council meetings are difficult sometimes to attend when the schedule changes, and especially the time being this early. Public outreach has become one meeting to ask for input and a second meeting to tell us what the final plan is. When I moved to Capitola in 2000, it was the first time I engaged in municipal government. Days of back-room meetings and deal-making were over, and decisions were made in public with transparency. There was a lot of dialogue. Hard questions were asked, and staff directives were challenged. Things were simpler then and cheaper, too. We weren't chasing grants for everything we wanted to get done. The city generated pretty good revenues. Our city leaders were required to live in Capitola so that they would be influenced by the community they were elected or hired to manage. Santa Cruz was a different place then. It was run very differently from Capitola, and we weren't trying to be like them. We didn't do everything right, but it felt like we did it together. Things are different now. Revenues are down. City manager does not now, nor has he ever lived, in Capitola. Experienced council members have been replaced with new, less experienced leaders. Long-term staff members have retired and been replaced with new professionals. These professionals are more experienced at getting grants than they are at working with the public, especially a public like ours that is engaged. They don't know us, and they don't seem to want to. Consultants are hired for every project. Public outreach is being handed off to consultants to manage, and that's what we feel like. We feel like we're being managed. We should feel like we're being engaged to be part of the solution, and we don't. Managing the city and its progress and development through the years takes funding. Capitola is at a place in its history where there are a lot of moving parts. We're getting older. A lot of our infrastructure needs repair and upgrade. The county and the city are more popular than ever, and the population is growing. It's a big job, and I respect that. But the relationship between our governing body and our citizenry is broken. How can we fix it? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Tom Parker. I live 306 Grand Avenue. 20 years ago, I woke up one rainy morning to a big whoosh, and the main drain pipe on the, in front of our next-door neighbor's house had broken, and mud and dirt was just flying down the cliff. I called a council member I knew then, and within an hour, a granite team was out. According to the granite team, doing a temporary fix. There's been five temporary fixes now, according to the city manager, each one costing around $7,000. There were two failures last year. So in the spring, right after the last rain, I got together with the public works director and the city manager, and the public works director assured me that this year, they were going to solve the problem, make a permanent fix to that drain. They were going to contact a couple of different firms, and they're going to come up with plans, and none of that has been done. So a couple of years before that, on the 400 block of Grand Avenue, they had a collapse there. They closed the path at that point. And a contractor was hired to repair the bluff, and it's been repaired ever since. Well, that same contractor I contacted a couple of weeks ago, he drew up plans to permanently fix the drain. Now, we presented them to the city manager and the public works director yesterday, and with the promise that they'd get back to us within 10 days. I just want the city council to know what's going on, and I want the city of Capitola to know what's going on. It is my desire to keep that path open on Depot Hill. And we just need to figure out some way to do that. Without your support, and your support, it will never happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Alan Cable. I've been a resident of Jewel Box for the last 13 years, and I build custom weather vanes. So you can probably guess that I want to address item H on your agenda. The, I'm told, by the way, that from my friends in the business, and indeed, there is a weather vane business, that there are six people in the United States that design and build custom weather vanes. So it's not a huge industry. The, the comment I have about the the request, the, the item that's coming up for discussion is that a large percentage of it is allocated to doing an engineering specification of the weather vane. And I'm a little bit curious as to exactly what that entails. I mean, I do understand some of the weather vanes I've built are almost four feet long and weigh about 20 pounds. So I understand that it is strongly preferred that they don't fall off these buildings, but I'm just wondering what else is in the engineering spec, and I'm not really asking you to, to, to explain that to me, but I'm just kind of curious. It would be nice to get that published. The second thing I would say is that there's enough, I hope there would be enough money in that engineering budget to maybe put a coat of paint on the van stand, because it badly needs one, and it really needs new lighting. So it would be a shame to put a really nice weather vane up there if we also didn't put a coat of paint on the, on the van stand, and maybe there's enough money in that engineering budget to do that. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clark and members of the Capitola City Council. My name is Zuki Ramos, and I'm here representing United Way of Santa Cruz County. I'm here tonight to express our gratitude for your support of the Children and Youth Bill of Rights and to talk a little bit about the Youth Liaison Program Initiative here in Santa Cruz County. As the coordinator this year for the youth liaisons, I'm excited to serve the youth as a bridge between the young people and the local government, bringing youth voices into city conversations. This year, our liaisons will meet bi-weekly, both with mentors from Youth Action Network and with city officials to facilitate, to facilitate collaboration and learning. This year, our objectives are to foster youth leadership, civic understanding, and a sense of belonging. I want to emphasize how important mentorship is, and thank you for their access to you. In collaboration with the cities of Capitola and Santa Cruz, our Capitola liaisons will co-create the Leaders Unite workshop, as well as welcome into loc, as well as welcome other youth into local commission, and shape our State of the Youth report this year. Thank you for investing in our future leaders, and I look forward to working with all of you and sharing updates throughout the year.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor Clark, members of the council. My name is Dan Hayfley. I'm a volunteer with Sabre Shores. I'm here to talk about offshore oil specifically. In April of 1987, Capitola City Council took a bold move by approving an ordinance that required that any onshore facilities to service offshore oil drilling would have to go to the vote of the people. And this is one of 26 ordinances done up and down the coast. We survived a legal challenge all the way up through the Supreme Court, which refused to hear the case. And then five years later, we got Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary, which we thought, at the time, protected us permanently from offshore oil. Unfortunately, probably in December, the Trump administration will issue a list of geographic target areas of California and other areas. That could include marine sanctuary areas. Also, seabed mining will be close behind. So Sabre Shores staff will be contacting your staff in the coming weeks or months to talk about the existing ordinance. We're doing this with many others to talk about updates to those ordinances. They're legally sound, but you know, this was 35, 40 years ago. A lot of changes could be made to make them more effective. So this is just a heads up, and again, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clark and members of the city council. My name is Dana Wagner. I am the director of Meals on Wheels of Santa Cruz County. I'm here today to share data with you from the fiscal year that just ended a couple of months ago on June 30th. For fiscal year 2025, Meals on Wheels delivered over 164,000 meals to 200, to 988 homebound seniors. We conducted over 2,100 wellness checks with our participants to ensure their well-being and coordination of services. Our 47 volunteer drivers provide weekly greetings and let Meals on Wheels staff know if they notice anything of concern that requires further intervention. In Capitola, we served over 18,000 meals, including 8,500 breakfast meals and 9,600 dinners. Capitola is unique among our municipalities in that the city has funded breakfast for its seniors, and this is a wonderful service. At our congregate dining sites, we served close to 32,000 meals to 638 older adults in fiscal year 2025. We also arranged for educational presentations on fraud and scam prevention, a topic of great concern for the elderly, dental health, and lowering PGNB bills. Seniors participating in Meals on Wheels are overwhelmingly satisfied with the service they receive. 100% of those receiving undelivered meals stated that our service helps them avoid institutional placement, and 96% of congregate diners state that the congregate meals help them to eat healthier. I wanted to present these numbers to you today to let you know that city dollars are well-spent and optimally utilized to ensure the health and well-being of our growing senior population. Older adults are the fastest-growing population in California and no more so than in Santa Cruz County. On behalf of over 1,600 seniors participating in Meals on Wheels, I am ever grateful for your support. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm here about the closure on Bay and Porter that's coming up. Well, I don't know if there's anything you can do, but as you know, we have two of our biggest events happening in September, the Art and Wine and the Beach Festival. And for the Art and Wine, there is 20,000 people that take that exit. So if there is any way we can have them postpone that closure for a few weeks, that would be greatly appreciated. I don't know if you guys have someone you can talk to or whatever, but there's going to be a lot of confusion and a lot of traffic issues if we can't keep them out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
So the purpose of the Finance Advisory Committee is to provide financial and budget alternatives to the city council, provide financial and budget services advice to the city manager, and review the budget and financial reports for the city. I'd like to thank councilmember Westman for noticing and pulling the added agenda, consent agenda item at the July City Council meeting to change the structure of the fact requiring additional disclosure by volunteers not previously required, a committee that is not a decision-making body. At the July meeting, councilmember Orbach stated that she had heard, and the city mount, uh, manager Goldstein commented that city member Orbach, it was correct that the fact wanted to look at all of the city contracts, the 100 contracts the city had entered into individually. Councilmember Orbach suggested the fact focus on policy, not nitty-gritty operations. This is inaccurate and misleading. In our review of the budget and the concerning, considering long-term concerns about our city's financial stability, the fact acts that we can see a list, not individual contracts, of items in the $3.4 million expenditure line item called Contract Services with notation that was required by mandates, resolutions, et cetera, and what was optional and what was discretionary. This expenditure category is the largest behind personnel at 18% of the general fund. As our purpose is to review the budget and provide alternatives or advice, this seemed like a good place to make sure we understood the expenditures of the city. We do not make decisions. We advise. The finance director did a great job of summarizing the category. No actual contracts were requested or reviewed. Our objective was to advocate for the city's financial leadership in supporting this category and know what items might be on deck for further review, if so required, to balance the budget in the future. For the city to suggest that the emphasis for suggesting we be added to Form 700 list was a potential for conflict of interest based on hearsay is concerning. For a council member to suggest we need to stop focusing on the nitty-gritty operations based on hearsay is insulting. We volunteer to participate on this committee for the city that we love and to partner with the city on ideas that can promote financial and budget alternatives to help us remain fiscally stable and in a way that supports the general plan. If you, if you have questions, you're all welcome, as you know, because all fact meetings are public, are open meetings, and that will clear up any confusion as, as to what you may have heard. In the future, I'd recommend that the city discuss any impetus to avoid conflict of interest with the committee or the chair before you listen to what one person may have heard, and avoid creating a more diverse culture between city leadership and a community that's generally interested in working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for letting us speak today. I am third-generation Woodworm Party Store, 52 years young. With the new Capitola or Bay Avenue road restructure is hurting our business. It's hurting people on bikes. A girl was hit in front of our store and lost her front teeth. I see people fly down the center all the time. It's causing more congestion and more problems, and I really think that we need to go back to where it was before. And now with the freeway closing, you're talking our business is probably going to go down another 30% because of it. And I want to know what you're going to do as our city council to help out these local small businesses that have been here for so long that may not make it with all the construction and the road closures. Thank you.
Thank you. See, no further public comment. I'll bring it to staff comments.
Staff, no comments tonight.
No staff comments. I'll open it up for council comments.
I, I had a couple. I wanted to let everyone know that I went to the area agency on aging advisory. I wanted to let everyone know that I went to the area agency on Aging Advisory Committee meeting, and the reason that you have this handout in front of you tonight is this is one that was presented to us at that meeting about a master plan for aging. And they asked us to come back at our next meeting and give them a list of items that we currently include in our strategic plan for dealing with seniors and our aging population. And I have to say, I was a little disappointed after going through and reading it again that we really don't talk about seniors in the plan. So, at some point, I know it's a sort of living document that gets changed over the years, I hope in the next go-around, that having some programs directed to our seniors, which as we already heard tonight, is the largest-growing population that we have, that we can do that. The second thing I had was that I had on my list that I would like to have the council, if you agree, since I need to put agenda items on an open session, to have our Chamber of Commerce come and make a presentation to the council. Because before tonight, in talking to a lot of our sort of small, local businesses, they do seem to be struggling. I think they're correct that these freeway closures are going to have an impact on them. And it would be nice to hear from our chamber what programs they have to help our local small businesses. And I know they have a couple of big events coming up in September, so it certainly could happen in October when they have a little more time, but it would be nice to hear from them. And the last thing I have is that I did go to the Finance Advisory Board meeting, the last one, and we had a presentation on the Brown Acts and making ethical decisions. And one of the things that came up for me was this, you know, sort of whole idea about transparency and how do we do it? And I was wondering, we have so much going on that I think people do get confused about what's happening, when, and where. And I think it would be worthwhile for us to perhaps, you know, pick a Saturday or have a special meeting where we sort of have a comprehensive look at all of the projects and plans that we have, sort of spell them out so people can see where we are in the process on those projects. And I also think it would be helpful to staff who, you know, at times, while we have a wonderful staff, and I appreciate all of them, seems to be a bit overwhelmed with, you know, going from project to project. And we've talked about having a capital improvements list coming up, is a project we wanted to do. And it seemed like just having a general meeting where we could talk about where we are, what we have planned, what's going forward, so we can set ourselves up for success and we can, you know, let the community know early on, these are the things that are going to be happening, this is the direction we're going, these are the projects we're going to work on. So, I would appreciate it if the council would be willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. First, we'll need someone to second her agenda.
I can second that.
Great. And I would agree with the workday for the council and open to the public. I think it's a great idea.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, not too much to report, but there is some changes, or there are some changes happening in the village, quite a few new businesses opening up or new ownership of current businesses happening. So, with the holiday weekend coming up, I encourage people to come and take a look around, walk around, don't drive, because that's going to be scary for everybody. So, just remember, be patient, and hopefully we can get through the closures and figure out if there's a way to mitigate the busy season for our lovely village here. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. So, I wanted to give a couple of updates. One is I attended the last RTC meeting, and I wanted to share some of the things that are going on with the RTC as updates. At that time, as the commissioners, we received a report that has been made public on what the projected cost is of the rail trail project now referred to as effort. It's right now sitting about $4.3 billion, and that's on the, probably an average in the middle. We reviewed that, and we also looked at potentially what that would cost to our local community in funding that. And so, that report is in a draft form now. It'll be brought back to us as RTC commissioners in December for final adoption. That document's online, and I encourage everybody to look at that as an active document that has a lot of effects on our local community. Another thing that we did, is we all heard about the Murray Street Bridge closure. Our RTC commission voted 11-0 in support of to have our executive director, Sarah Christensen, work directly with the City of Santa Cruz and their city council if the need is and their request is to work for the potential options like using the Murray Street Bridge. That is pending issue. That really has to do with Santa Cruz, but I applaud my other fellow commissioners in looking at options and providing as much support as we could to our neighbors and another community. Let's see. Also, our mayor, Joe Clark, and myself were on an ad hoc committee, and we wrote a letter to the RTC that was authored by the mayor and was sent to the RTC regarding some questions that the community has sent to, I think, the council. We took those questions, put them in a formal letter, and that letter was being responded to by the RTC, and we should have that early next week, and we'll work with our city staff and making sure that that is publicized. Also, I'm very much involved in, our chair, the RTC, brought together an ad hoc committee to work together on looking what our impacts or potential impacts could be to the Castle Mobile Home States and also Blue and Gold. Myself, Manu Koenig, Kim DeSerphe, Steve Clark, all sit on that ad hoc group, and we right now are researching and trying to pull together some actual costs and what some of these potential impacts could be if some of these easements are addressed. Let's see. Just a quick update. Another thing that I think we all have received is a notice about the closure of the on-ramps on Bay Avenue, and that are coming up on September 4th. I'm proud to say that with that, as such a concern, I reached out to our other two local supervisors in the area, Manu Koenig and also Kim DeSerphe and myself. I worked on quite a lot yesterday and today, and just as about three minutes ago, right before our meeting started, I received a text message that the Bay Avenue on-ramps and off-ramps won't have been pushed now until after the Art and Wine Festival, so we can have our community event, and that's going to be on September 15th. And I think that'll be an updated press release going out very near future. But it was very important, I think, as an event of having 20,000, 25,000 people come into Capitola, that we make sure we have that egress open up for us. We also just wanted to appreciate, as we're winding down the summer, all the hard work that our Arts Commission and our Rec Department has done with the amazing concerts, the movies, the dueling pianos and stuff, and another successful Capitola summer. Just following up on a couple of comments, totally support the Saturday meeting to have, I think, the community come together. It sounds like a wonderful idea to really look at where all these projects are and maybe provide a sense of direction with all these things going on. Just a question for staff that we heard from comments regarding the Deepa Hill issue. Would that be brought back to us as an update on what we'll be doing there as we're probably, you know, six Fridays away from Serene?
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. So, staff's plan at this point is to look for an opportunity for an emergency repair. We can bring an update to the next council meeting if you'd like. I know we are, we did meet with some of the property owners, the folks looking at the issue, and we are looking at, we're working with a contractor to conduct an emergency permanent repair up there. So, if you'd like an update on it, otherwise, it's within our purchasing authority to take care of it.
And connected with that, we also have another group up there working on what the erosion of the bluff looks like. And I think Paul Esti has been like a chair, if you want to call that, of a community meeting. Is there any updates on that, or could those two both come together at the same time?
I think that makes sense. I mean, I think we need to proceed with the repair to that drainage system in all haste. And I haven't been in communication with Mr. Esti recently, but I think the idea would be we can come back with sort of their final report, where we are with that drainage situation. Hopefully, it's already done by then, and then talk about the options for the path. So, I think those things all should come together. I think probably October, November might be the timeline, and with any luck, we will be able to say that that drainage improvements are already complete.
Okay. Thank you. And then just one follow-up request to Commissioner Westman, in that you're asked for the chamber to come give some kind of presentation. Would you wind with that idea at the same time that we look at having maybe like the BIA, you know, if we, I don't know, if we're starting to look at economic development and stuff like that and what our partners provide, you know, maybe we could have our business, BIA, attend that and also maybe visit Santa Cruz at the same time? Would you be?
I think that would be great. You know, my goal is to really not only educate the council, but the businesses in the community about what programs there are to try and help out our local businesses, because it seems like we've learned a lot about businesses lately, and we need to have them included. So, that would be great and fine with me.
I'd just love to see that. I think that'd be great, and also with the new naming of our department Economic Development, try a new fresh start to look at everything. So, that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Orbach.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So, I attended the Metro Board meeting on August 22nd, where we received an oral update from Executive Director of the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission on the recent Californian Transportation Commission CTC grant funding of $128.7 million for infrastructure projects. This is the largest grant ever received by the RTC, and it is for multimodal projects connecting Watsonville and Santa Cruz. The funding of the multi-corridor program will support Highway 1 expansion from State Park Drive to Freedom Boulevard, coastal rail trail segment 12 along the branch line right-of-way between State Park Drive and Real Del Mar, including four bicycle and pedestrian over crossings, two over Highway 1 and two over SoCal Drive. There will also be SoCal Drive improvements between State Park Drive and Freedom Boulevard, including buffered and protected bike lanes, signal upgrades, sidewalk gap closures, ADA curb ramps, and enhanced crosswalks for pedestrians, as well as an improvement in the metro routes envisioned in their 2024 rapid study, which includes inline boarding platforms, transit signal priority at 60 different traffic lights, shelters, and real-time displays. In addition, Metro received a grant from America Walks to promote a week without driving. That's happening September 29th through October 5th. I'd like to challenge my colleagues, our staff, and our residents to sign up and participate. If not walk for a whole week, then try for a day. I think this could be a powerful experience to be able to walk in the shoes of the 30% of the people in this community who do not drive. My hope for our community is to build healthier habits to include physical activity, more physical activity, and be inspired to choose greener ways to move about. I would like to have our city issue a proclamation of support at an upcoming meeting. There will be a countywide Week Without Driving event that's going to be held at the Capitola Mall outside of the Metro Transit Station on September 30th from 11:00 to 3:00. I hope you can all join us. Join us. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will do that proclamation. Thanks. I'd like to talk about an item. On October 27th, the city clerk received a complaint for damages against the city and a city council member by Mr. Kevin Maguire. I just wanted to relay that we've received it and we've acknowledged it. A hill. Yeah, here we are again. I need to make sure we get this on the agenda, not the next meeting, but I'd like to have it put on the first meeting in September. We can bring it back. Several things we need to revisit. First, I'm sorry, the first, yeah, the first meeting, second meeting in September.
So, we have two meetings in September, September 11th and then September 25th, I believe?
Yeah. I'd like to do it later. I know we have quite a few things on the agenda, but I would like to put that on there and get it set so we can get working on that.
So, are we going to give some thought to that agenda item? Because it seems to me that, you know, I appreciate what has been done before, but, you know, we all start projects, we do our best and try and make it work, and sometimes we need to go back and change it a bit. If we have heard ideas from the community about options that might, they feel might work, is there going to be a way to get that to staff so we can have some information on whether those are, you know, ideas that don't have any merit or ideas that, you know, might help in solving some of the problems? I mean, is it okay if we just individually tell staff, or I don't want to step on anyone's toes?
No, I think it's great that we collectively put in our ideas, and then definitely need to bring it back because things aren't working the way they should be, and with the new closures on the highway, it's going to be even more disastrous, so absolutely.
Thank you.
And lastly, I also want to echo our Twilight Concerts. What a great thing. Last night was our last one. I'd like to thank the Art and Cultural Commission. Excellent job on putting those on. Look forward to them every year. So, with that, we'll close out comments for the council and go to number eight, consent items. Any council member that'd like to pull an item can do so, or I'm looking for a motion.
And there's a couple of items I'd like to pull.
Okay.
I'd like to pull item D and J for discussion, and then I have one quick question regarding I. I'm sorry. Yes.
I. Okay, we will pull D and J and have that at the end of our, we'll talk about it at the end of General Government, and go ahead with the question for I.
Yeah, just one question. In the staff presentation, there's just a couple of comments in there that I was just concerned about. It says that this sales tax thing might not have or might not have an impact on potential sales tax. And see, I was just concerned, like, probably and might not. What is our potential opportunity our sales tax could be addressed, or is that just merely just around the ordinance itself?
So, item I on the agenda is the consideration of establishing the Santa Cruz Mountain Wine Improvement District. This is a business improvement district which establishes a tax on a specific type of business, industry, geographic region for a specific purpose. In this case, what they're doing is they're proposing a tax on wineries, wine producers, and tasting rooms that are affiliated with those producers. It's a specific kind of ABC liquor license. And these people are proposing to self-tax themselves, form this assessment district, and then to market the region as Santa Cruz Mountain Wines. So, that's the basic structure of what the proposal is. I believe there's one, maybe two businesses within Capitola that would be affected by this tax. The language in the staff report talking about potentially increased tax revenue, that's the purpose of these districts, is to help increase tourism, it helps increase the brand, help sell more Santa Cruz Mountain Wines. So, when the staff report said potentially a future increase in sales tax revenue, it is anticipating the wild success of this district in helping market and brand Santa Cruz wines, thereby improving our local economy.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're looking for a motion for items A through L minus D and J.
It's D and J, I ask.
D and J.
And I'll second it.
We have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consent items passed. That brings us to General Government. Nine A.
All right. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. First general gov item we have here today is the first reading of an ordinance prohibiting the sale of cigarettes and cigars with filters. Next slide, please.
Next slide, please. So a bit of background on this item. Back in October of 2024, the Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance prohibiting the sale of filtered tobacco products in all the unincorporated areas of the county. One of the stipulations on enforcement of that ordinance was to have at least two additional jurisdictions, so two of the cities within the county, to adopt a similar ordinance, and then the ordinance for the county could go into effect until January 1st, 2027. And on June 24th, the City of Santa Cruz adopted a similar ordinance. Next slide, please. So this came to our commission on the environment back in March, and they unanimously recommended that the city council also adopt a similar ordinance. We had a presentation from County Health on April of 2025, and the council directed staff to return with an ordinance for formal consideration, and that's where we are this evening. Slide, please. So this is an amendment to the Municipal Code, Chapter 5.38. Currently, it is, most of the topic is the sale of flavored tobacco products. This would amend the municipal code section to prohibit the sale of the filtered cigars and cigarettes. Next slide. In addition to the flavored tobacco products. You did get an additional material for this item with the ordinance language. An attempt to simplify some of the county's language, staff unintentionally broadened the scope to all tobacco products versus cigarettes and cigars. So we made those changes to directly reflect the county and the City of Santa Cruz ordinance to make it apply to all potential filter materials, have the definitions be the same, and then also to strike the bit about having two different municipalities adopt the ordinance, because we would be the second municipality. So this is all to have it read across, same across all jurisdictions who have adopted this ordinance, and also in the future to help enforceability. Next slide, please. So the proposal for an ordinance intends to really reduce the filters, which contribute quite a bit to tobacco waste on our beaches and other city areas of the city and county. We received quite a bit, a extensive presentation from the county. I believe that some of their staff is also here today, and may make public comment to the fact that that's one of the most picked-up pieces of litter on our beaches. We have data to support that. Also, this would align with our existing municipal policies about smoking in general within the village and the city, and then again with this flavored tobacco product ban. Next slide, please. So community outreach, we did contact all the active tobacco retailers that this would apply to in Capitola. The invitation was to get any, to share information, or also gather to get any input. To date, staff hasn't received any correspondence directly from those retailers. We have obviously received a lot of correspondence generally, and also from advocacy groups representing those retailers. Next slide. So if this is adopted, it would be similar to the county and City of Santa Cruz ordinance, where it would, the ordinance itself would take effect 30 days from passage and adoption, but the enforcement of the ordinance, as written in the ordinance, would not take place until January 1st, 2027. Next slide, please. And recommended action is on the screen, as amended by staff in your agenda packet. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Council questions?
I just have two questions. So this is strictly related to tobacco products. I mean, we know there's a lot of cannabis sales, and they, a lot of those products have filters as well, I understand. Why is it just tobacco?
I think the intent of the ordinance, I also, the county can speak for themselves, was to ban things that are widely commercially available, so that, in particular cigarettes and cigars, because there are also electronic cigarettes that may or may not have a filter on them. That is not part of the ordinance. It's really to deal with the bulk of the litter that we are seeing on our beaches and streets.
And, you know, it seems to me that the reason we're doing this is because these filters aren't biodegradable. They actually create litter on the beach. And, you know, I was a little curious, so I will confess, I went online to see, you know, what's going on with filters. Is there a biodegradable filter? How does that work? And while there doesn't seem to be one right now, it seems that, you know, some groups are working on trying to develop them. So if someone did develop like a biodegradable filter, we would need to amend the ordinance to allow that product to be sold rather than the non-biodegradable one? Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just keep getting asked those questions, so I wanted to make certain I understood why.
Thank you. Questions on the side?
No questions.
So we've touched on this a little bit earlier with Councilwoman Westman. You know, given what's happening to the businesses due to the Murray Street closure, due to all the road repairs, expansion of Highway One, I really want to make sure that we think about and have a plan to help our businesses transition. I don't want to just be reactive when things are really bad, and I want to be mindful of the impacts to our local businesses that rely on this revenue source. What are we doing to help them transition? Is there a implementation window? And, you know, perhaps we can explore allowing additional signage temporarily to promote new products, like A-Frame or whatever. Have we thought about that?
So I will ask our Community Economic Development Director, Katie Hurley, to come up here and share her thoughts, but I think we did do initial reach-out to the businesses, and that was part of the council's direction, was that we do that reach-out and find out about what we could potentially do to help mitigate impacts. I think that we didn't, we didn't receive any responses. I think the number-one way we probably could help mitigate impact would be to time it longer, give them more time to adjust, because I think the county approved their ordinance probably a year ago. So that would, you know, at this point, January 1, 2027 is coming sooner than when the county did it, so conceivably, we could implement hours a bit later to give them more time to adjust. I think Councilmember Westman's point about the filter, whether it's, if the issue is the plastics, whether, if there was a biodegradable filter, if that would be allowed, that certainly could support them. And then, as you mentioned, we could talk about opportunities for temporary signing, allow more temporary signing, banner signs are allowed in specific situations. We could probably come up with some mechanism by which they could be allowed for maybe a longer period of time or something for tobacco retailers. And if our Economic Development Director, Hurley, has anything else to add, please feel free.
Ms. Katie just stepped out.
Okay.
And she has reappeared.
I apologize I had to step away. Can I hear the question one more time?
Yeah, I was just saying how with the recent Murray Bridge closures, the impacts to the local businesses there, I just want to be mindful of the impacts to local businesses with this, with this potential ban, and what resources we have to assist them. Whether there could be a certain, like, what the implementation window would be, what the transition would be, perhaps exploring allowing temporary leniency in signage to promote new products, or what we can do in the economic standpoint as a director.
We could, we could definitely look into options for supporting the businesses and look at some of the practices that some of our neighboring jurisdictions have implemented, if they've implemented. But I'll, I can definitely look into that with the goal of assisting these businesses.
Great. So you know further council questions? We will bring that to public comment. I would like to, at this time, get a hand of who wants to speak on this matter. That's what I thought. So with that being said, we would like to keep the comments down to one to two minutes, because I want everyone to get a chance to, to speak. If you guys could do that for me, keep it down to one to two minutes?
One, one or two?
No, 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 no.
One's, one's more preferable.
I was in line, though.
Two at the most.
Mayor, if I could ask for a hard time limit. We have a setting on our timer. We can't do 30-second intervals. It has to be in a minute increment, so it would have to be either one minute or two minutes.
We'll go with two minutes.
Mayor, two minutes? Okay.
Thank you.
If we can come to order.
Oh, we'll do what I can.
All right, we're gonna get started here. Welcome.
Yeah, you know, thank you so much. My name is James Healy-Widman. I was in the City of Santa Cruz several times when this subject came up.
We have somebody speaking.
And it was really just kind of quite crazy, you know? People might think that some of the things I'm gonna say is kind of off the wall, and hey, I'm used to that. The only thing that needs to be banned are the Metrocrats. Metrocrats make the Nazis look like sweet little girls. And I'm referring to those individuals specifically that have had mayoral or city manager training from the 1313 Syndicate. You know, John D. Rockefeller died in 1937, Leland Stanford died in 1893, and Andrew Carnegie died in, I think, 1919. They were so successful with pacifying the people in the United States before 1920, that they sent John Ivy over to train Göring, Joseph Goebbels, and Adolf Hitler on how to pacify society. They had already done that by 1920 in the United States. You know, this book, The Metrocrats, you made a mistake a couple of days ago. I'll read the title, The Metrocrats. Regionalism and Non-Law Governments Are Destroying the United States. Mistake I made. It's a woman wrote that. Most of the women. Women seem to have more smart guts than the men. 37 seconds. About the author. For more than 15 years, Joe Heinmann has been known for an unyielding opponent to the alien ideas that have been turning self-governments of Americans into a grotesque replica of old world's divine rights of rulers. You know, on the August 19th supervisors' meeting, I listened in to her, a half hour of them going over nothing. The agenda they had from 2018 to 2024, 2024 to 2032, had 468 objectives. Getting rid of the small business is just one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Before I begin, Councilmember Westman, I would just like to thank you from my heart for the comments you made to city staff. It's nice to, to hear that. We've gotten none of that from Santa Cruz. Good evening, Mayor Clark, fellow council members. My name is Kirk DeChico, and I've been a local businessman here for 40 years. Together with my team, we've given away thousands of turkeys for Thanksgiving, Christmas gifts, thousands of Christmas gifts every year, sandwiches for the homeless. Started a new fund, major fundraiser this, three years ago, the Pahara Valley Prevention Student Assistance in Watsonville, not to mention providing many lunches for the Watsonville Police Cadet Program annually. We provide 70 full-time jobs between our four stores and have complied with every regulation that is mandated by this county, be it plastic bags and straws, to take out containers and cups, even when it is costly and difficult to run a small business like ours to afford. But banning filtered cigarettes will hurt us deeply. Tobacco is a nationwide product. Smoking is a personal choice. The real issue is littering. Littering is something we can educate, enforce, and clean up. A ban would slash our sales by 30 to 40%, eliminate jobs, and push customers to shop in neighboring towns. I own a store in downtown Santa Cruz. We don't sell many cigarettes. They all come from San Jose. That's, your law here is not gonna prevent that. Instead, it risks catering to black markets. Happens all over in New York.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking now for the third time, once before the Environmental Commission, once before you all. My name is Neil Savage. I live in the jewel box. I love to swim around the Capitola Wharf. After work on Wednesdays with a group, we swim in Capitola. There have been between 15 and 20 swimmers each of the last three weeks, swimming around the wharf. As I walked down to swim yesterday, I picked up seven cigarette butts, which is about average. I think I brought five to the last council meeting. You may ask, why do I pick up these disgusting cigarette butts left by somebody else? It's simple, because I'd rather pick them up than swim with them. Filters are of no benefit to anyone other than to deceive smokers, and it's a fantasy that public education will modify what is an habitual habit. When smokers throw down their cigarettes, if you asked them 10 seconds later, they wouldn't know they had done it. It's all habit. Cigarette filters should be banned nationwide, and as the public comment letters show, the counties south of us are just waiting to follow your lead. Today, you have an opportunity to take this small but necessary first step in what will become a statewide ban, a statewide movement. But we'll start small with just our 400 yards of sandy beach. Thank you for voting for the ordinance prohibiting the sale of cigarettes and cigars with filters. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clark and fellow council members. My name is Tyler Fox, and I'm a lifelong resident here. I learned to surf just down the street when I was eight years old. I've taught paddleboard lessons out here. I've taught surf lessons. I've been in and around this coastline my whole life, and I have seen a steady increase in the amount of trash, and specifically, single-use cigarette butts, plastic cigarette butts. And just like the gentleman said before me, it's habitual. People do not think. They may see a sign. I've seen people literally sitting five feet away from a sign, and they'll drop their cigarette butt. We've tried it. It doesn't work. I think now is a great opportunity for, for us all to be brave, stand up for our environment, and stand up for the health of future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I have called this community home for 37 years, coming from a war-torn Vietnam, homeless, jobless, didn't speak any English. Just to let you know how much I adore, love, and support this community and giving back to me. I care. This is why the decision to come to you in front of you today, and probably against a lot of people in the back room, is a huge thing. We know ban doesn't work. When you ban somebody not smoking cigarettes, they will try some different way to support their need, their anxiety. And banning cigarettes to, to prevent the litter on the beach, it sounds simple, but it won't solve the problem. Beaches won't suddenly come clean. There will be food wrapper, bottles, cannabis filters, and cup left behind, and that's just saying a few things. Tourists will bring their own cigarette and litter. Smokers will simply shop nearby towns and still smoke on our beaches, and our local business will lose revenue, lay off employees, and even close down, bankrupt. That doesn't solve me lost cell tax to the city. How will you implement the ban? We're facing a huge problem right now under the current administration with immigration and tariff. Our business is under siege, and you heard from previous local retailer being affected by construction? Think of our dilemma in this room. The perfect storm will destroy us all. Back to the reason why I'm in front of you today, there is a win-win solution. I, my name is Sheri Deng, personally volunteered to organize the beach cleanup. You tell me where, I will be there. Let's form a committee with local store owner and keep the discleaning year, go year-round. Put the conceded smoke 50 cent tax per pack of cigarette, earmarked specifically for cleanup. This way, we have cleaner beaches, accountability right here in front of you, no damage to local retailer, no job loss. I believe in dry run.
Thank you.
I know. If we pass this, you will see me back soon, the county and you. My name, once again, Sheri Deng.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, City Council. My name is Felix Blanco. I used to be my boss before. I own two businesses in Santa Cruz County, and we have been in front of the City Council of Santa Cruz and the county, and we have asked them to look at all the, all the other things that could be done in order to get the cigarette butts off the beach. We have showed them different ways to do it, but nobody wants to listen. And businesses are going down left and right here in Capitola. Businesses are going down, and we don't want that to happen. I mean, our city, our county is gonna be And we don't want that to happen. I mean, our city, our county is gonna be gone. We have small retailers every single day trying to come up to pay their employees, to pay the sales tax that we paid to you guys. So we ask you, please, help the small businesses by listening to all the other options that there are to get cigarettes off the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name's Dan. I run a site up the street for H&amp;S Energy. We go through quite a lot of cigarettes every day. Like other people have said, a ban here is not really gonna have quite as much of an effect as you guys might think because people will just bring it from out of town, especially being a tourist location. We get a lot of out-of-town visitors. In addition, I believe that smoking is already banned on the Esplanade, Capitola Beach, and Main Beach. And we can't enforce that which would reduce cigarette butts on the beaches. Doesn't exactly inspire confidence that a ban would be enforced well either. Yep, that's it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jimmy, and I'm a business owner. And I'm against the proposed ban banning filtered tobacco products. There are over 480 tobacco retailers within 10 miles of the county borders, and no Santa Cruz County resident is more than 20 miles from a bordering retailer. Customers just don't buy a pack of cigarettes. They buy other items along with it. The ordinance will affect sales resulting in staff layoffs. While I support the environmental intent, I urge you to consider its economic harm to local businesses, layoffs, risk of black market, and strain on our budget. First, Capitola claims to be a pro-business, yet this ban contradicts that stance. Local retailers, including convenience store and smoke shops, rely heavily on filtered cigarette sales. Second, this ban risks creating black market for filtered cigarettes. Unregulated vendors could thrive bypassing age verification for giving those under 21 easy access to tobacco. This undermines public health efforts and could increase youth smoking. Third, Capitola is facing future budget challenges primarily due to rising pension costs and other increasing expenditures. Banning filtered cigarettes could reduce sales tax revenue from tobacco. Without evidence that the ban will deliver proportional environmental benefits, the city risks a net financial loss. Fourth, the ordinance relies on a 2017 NOAA report claiming 23% of the debris in Monterey National Monterey Sanctuary is tobacco-related. Eight years old. That's how old this report is. Finally, can anyone tell me how many citations were issued at the county beaches while enforcing smoking bans? And how many tickets were given for littering? I think we need to assess this data and make an informed decision. Without clear enforcement metrics, we cannot gauge the effectiveness of existing measures or the necessity of this ban. I urge the council to conduct a current economic impact study, assess black market
Thank you.
and environmental data.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for having us. My name is Christian Shaw. I'm a local resident and business owner, and I've spent 10 years confronting plastic pollution in the nonprofit space. This is a really complicated issue, and I have a lot of sensitivity for small business owners, you know, looking at lost revenue if this step is taken. But when you look at the big picture and the opportunity here to really set an example, do something bold, and you know, set the stage for a much cleaner beach and oceans into the future. This is a huge opportunity, and I think we should take it. And but I think it can't just be a ban as well as a ban really looking at, just like the gentleman before me mentioned, stepped-up fines and enforcement for littering. It could be really significant in influencing how people think about the way they're behaving when they're at the beach and what they're leaving behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Clark and Councilmembers. My name is Dan Hayfley, and I'm here in support of the ban. Local governments, community volunteers, and conservation groups have basically borne the brunt of beach cleanups and dealing with this problem financially. I've been doing beach cleanups for 40 years, and I can tell you this is true. Save Our Shores volunteers, and that's just one organization out of many that do beach cleanups, picked up 15,000 cigarette butts between 2013 and 2024. And as I mentioned, it doesn't include what other organizations have found in their beach cleanups. It's, some will say that a local ban may not be effective because people can go elsewhere. But the fact is that a lot of cigarette butts that you see on the shoreline in Capitola come through the watershed. And it's likely that a lot of these cigarettes and the source of a lot of these butts were consumed and purchased locally. So your action today would be the third. You'd be one of three jurisdictions that touch the ocean in Santa Cruz County. As been mentioned before, this is an example. And the same thing happened with the plastic bag ban. Local action led to state action, and I think that's where we eventually like to go. So thank you for considering this, and I hope you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Egan, and I'm the Executive Director of the Coastal Watershed Council. As stewards of not only our beaches, but also our creek and our watersheds, we see firsthand the environmental impact that cigarette butts have in our freshwaterways. Additionally, we go out into the schools and we educate the next generation of environmental stewards. And those kids are so inspiring because they right away want to take action, and a lot of them sign up to do cleanups. And while that's inspiring, it's also heartbreaking because we're watching the youngest kids in our community clean up cigarette butts that adults have left on our creeks, streams, and beaches. They're cleaning up after adults that have had the opportunity to clean up after themselves and don't. As others have said, it's habitual. So we think enough is enough, and we ask you to support banning the butt. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and Councilmembers. My name is Jaime Rojas. I'm with the National Association Tobacco Outlets. We represent tobacco retailer Stroud California and here in Capitola as well. We are against the proposed ordinance for many of the reasons that you've heard before. It's already illegal to litter. How many enforcement violations have been cited by the city and by the county? No data. How many hundreds of thousands of dollars could be raised to be able to clean the beaches? No dollars or no studies. As we oppose this, we respectfully intend and understand behind the policy and believe it's the wrong approach for Capitola and will create several unintended consequences, as mentioned. First, the ordinance unfairly targets responsible adults, consumers, and small business, local retailers, many of whom are family-owned, already operate under strict state and federal regulations. Adding a city-level filter ban is another layer that costs enforcement, will drive customers to surrounding communities, or unregulated online markets. That does nothing to improve litter of any of these communities has to offer on the beaches or for public health. It simply shifts the problem outside of Capitola borders. Second, the enforcement of this ban will only be difficult and expensive. Capitola would be dedicating scarcity resources to policing small items like filters rather than addressing the larger public safety needs. At the same time, legitimate businesses are punished while illegal sellers will continue operating without any consequences. And finally, Capitola should focus on proven solutions like stronger enforcement against illegal sales to minors, enforcement of its current litter ban on its beaches, expanding public education, and investing in litter prevention efforts. These strategies address community concerns without hurting small business or driving commerce out of Capitola. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Clark and Councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Graham. I serve as the CEO of the California Fuels and Convenience Alliance, representing the fuel and convenience retailers across the state, including right here in Capitola. I want to specifically ask that council look at this very seriously before a ban and do not rush this vote. Decisions of this magnitude deserve input from the small business owners who keep the community employed and thriving. They're here in this room. This is a great time for you to really hear where their concerns are. Not gonna go into some of the duplicate comments that have been made, but let's talk about the litter. This is not going to stop that. You've heard that. You guys have bans on littering, and that has not stopped it. On the Save Our Shores website, it talks about between 2013 and 2024, about 180,000 cigarette filters were collected locally. But in that same period, nearly 170,000 plastic pieces, so we have no idea exactly what that means, were also found. Cigarette filters are not the only problem, and this ordinance does not address cannabis filters, to your point, which would remain a source of plastic waste. Finally, the economic trade-off is stark. Convenience stores tax-generated roughly $154 million in revenue for this county, compared to about the $2 million that was reported at the Santa Cruz City hearing of the money that was spent on litter abatement, all litter. That's combined. This proposed risk vital tax revenue without solving the larger problem, I urge you to vote no on this ban.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Alessandra Manyasco. I'm the Senior Director of Government Affairs for the California Fuels and Convenience Alliance, representing fuel and convenience retailers throughout the state. We support environmental protection. However, the filtered tobacco ban will harm family-owned businesses without achieving meaningful environmental benefits. Since 99.5% of cigarettes contain filters, this effectively functions as a cigarette ban. Your own litter studies show that paper, plastic, and food wrappers rank higher than cigarette butts and collected debris. Santa Cruz County gas station and convenience stores employ 1,700 people, 1,700, generate $550 million in annual sales, and collect $154 million in taxes. Tonight, if the Capitola City Council approves this ban, it will trigger county-wide implementation that eliminates the significant revenue. Local residents will be forced to travel to neighboring counties for tobacco purchases, also foregoing fuel, beverages, and other merchandise typically bought during these transactions, which means additional losses in tax revenue. California's menthol ban proves prohibition fails. Studies found 42% of discarded packs came from illegal sources, while menthol products still comprise 21% of the marketplace. This ban won't eliminate cigarette litter when people can just drive elsewhere to purchase products and bring them back in the county. Our members are responsible business owners who have invested heavily in their stores but face closure under these restrictions that won't even reduce litter or smoking. We request the council reject this ordinance and pursue proven alternatives: education campaigns, ash receptacles in public spaces, which increase proper disposal by 5.5%, and recycling partnerships. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mark Burris, a resident of Santa Cruz County and on the Executive Committee for Santa Cruz Surf Rider Foundation. Sorry. And I represent 63 members here in Capitola and over 400 in the county. We've been working with Save Our Shores, as you guys know, to get this ordinance done for several years. And the issue around cigarette butts, people have mentioned other garbage, and it is a concern, but the butts carry a lot of toxins. And some other speakers may go to that point later. But it is really important to remember that is the poison that we're really concerned about getting that off our beaches. And so I'm gonna surrender much of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Clark. My name's Jack Ward. I am here to deliver a prepared statement on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation, Chapter of Santa Cruz. But I first want to mention, I'm really glad that everybody in the room seems to be concerned about litter on our beaches. I think that's great. And that is something that Surf Rider prepares to address every month. They do a beach cleanup every single month. You can find it on our website. And in those cleanups, last year in 2024 alone, we picked up 182,296 cigarette butts from beaches and public places. Now onto the prepared statement part. They continue to persist on our coastlines, sidewalks, parks, and in our storm drains. Through the Hold On To Your Butt program, we have worked for years to reduce this litter, installing ash cans, handling out personal ashtrays, and running public education campaigns. The problem continues because the source remains unchanged: plastic cigarette filters. These filters offer no proven health benefit, yet they're made of non-biodegradable plastic that leaches toxic chemicals into our waterways and harms marine life. We commend the city of Capitola for considering this ordinance. You may not please everybody, but this is a common sense step that reflects public will and environmental stewardship. You will not be alone. Other communities are already looking to follow, and local leadership like yours can help drive broader policy change. Thank you for your time. We urge you to vote in support of this ordinance.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for all the time you put into our Capitola issues. Really appreciate it. I've been a Capitola resident since 1978, and I've seen big changes. My name is Floris Soder, and I love this town. My kids and their school, my grandchildren, we used to go and do cleanups. I always instilled that into them. And I'm Portuguese. I'm from a small island in Portugal, but there are islands, I don't know if anybody knows about it. But I've seen big changes. I don't know if it's possible to do it here. Those, I don't know what they call, those containers with the holes for cigarettes, they helped immensely there. If they see it, they will, maybe they'll say, oh, that's what we need to put it in. Try to educate people. You can take a horse to water. So whatever you do, look into those. Maybe there will be, the filter's a good idea. The lights and this gentleman and lady said, it will come from other places. And they'll still dump them in here. They don't know what's going on in the Pacific. Just look what's out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please keep helping us.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Mayor Clark, Councilmembers. My name is Tracy Weiss. I'm the Executive Director with the O'Neill Sea Odyssey. And I'm here today to urge you to vote in favor of this proposed ordinance. Capitola's identity is deeply tied to the natural beauty of the Monterey Bay. Each year, the O'Neill Sea Odyssey has the privilege to bring thousands of youth out onto the waters of the Monterey Bay, where we teach lessons of science, ocean, and stewardship. Today, you have this opportunity to protect both our youth and our environment by banning the sale of filtered tobacco products in Capitola. These cigarette butts are not just litter. They are toxic plastics that don't break down. They break down into microplastics. They leach chemicals, and they end up in our SoCal Creek watershed, along our shoreline, and eventually into the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary, which is one of our greatest classrooms and assets that we have in our backyard. Through the O'Neill Sea Odyssey, I have the privilege to watch students take pride in cleaning beaches and protecting marine life. But they should not have to continue to pick up these cigarette butts again and again. We do our part to teach the next generation to be active stewards of the natural world. And today, we are asking you to help on this journey, to help protect our youth, our beaches, and to help where everyone can thrive. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Trish Pennella. I'm with Waste Free Santa Cruz. We're a local group supporting plastic pollution prevention in Santa Cruz County. I'm here to urge you to support Ban the Butt initiative. I've personally picked up thousands of cigarette butts at beach cleanups. These filters are not just litter. They're toxic plastic waste. They leach dangerous chemicals, lead, arsenic, and nicotine into our environment, threatening our beaches, ocean, and wildlife. They break down into microplastics, harming marine life, and entering our food chain. Local taxpayers and nonprofits shouldn't have to shoulder the burden of cleanup. By passing this ordinance, Santa Cruz can lead the nation in protecting our health, our environment, and the national, the marine... our environment, and the national—the Marine—Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. Let's take this proactive step together for a cleaner, safer, and healthier community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's George Leonard. I'm a marine scientist that has worked in, on, and around the Monterey Bay for about the last 25 years. And I just want to highlight tonight the role of Capitola in addressing this problem. Of course, as you know, the city of Santa Cruz and the unincorporated areas of the county of Santa Cruz have already passed similar ordinances to the one you're considering. And I forgot to say I support the policy, so I should probably put that on the record. So while your actions are independent of those other jurisdictions, it's important to remember that the underlying problem—that is ocean pollution—does not respect jurisdictional boundaries. SoCal Creek transports water from the nearby mountains, and it enters the ocean here at Capitola Beach, but then that water flows throughout the rest of Monterey Bay. Our ocean waves aren't just the foundation of our local surf culture and our local surf economy. They create currents that transport sand and water along the shore. And similarly, that can transport pollutants like marine debris, like plastic pollution, and like cigarette butts throughout the Monterey Bay. So the ocean, the beaches, and the surrounding watershed is a complex, integrated system whose overall health ultimately requires smart and effective decisions that are first made at the local level. But it ultimately needs all jurisdictions around the Monterey Bay to be working together to make sure that the Monterey Bay stays healthy and vibrant. And so Capitola should support this policy because it is a good policy, and it will benefit our local community and our local beaches. But perhaps more importantly, a vote in support of this policy today will demonstrate your commitment to be part of the much-needed, larger effort to work collaboratively with others around the whole of Monterey Bay to make sure that we address the broader problem of tobacco waste pollution.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Clark and council members. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to the community on this very important topic. A lot of people here today—you can see how important it is to all of us. My name is Sean Burns. I'm here to express my support for the ordinance to ban the sale of the toxic, single-use cigarette filter. Like many speaking, like George you just heard, we've been here many times before speaking on this issue, so sorry if I sound repetitive. But what is truly repetitive to me is the amount of cigarette butts I see all over Capitola and the Santa Cruz County. As someone born and raised in Santa Cruz, I will work for the local nonprofit Save the Waves Coalition. I spend a lot of my time in and around the beaches and ocean where these cigarette butts inevitably end up. Capitola has been a long-recognized leader in ocean preservation among the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary, and now it's a part of the Santa Cruz World Surfing Reserve. So by adopting this ordinance, Capitola has an opportunity to be the wave of change for other coastal communities. I'm hopeful that this policy will finally help us stop becoming numb, like I am, to seeing cigarette butts all over our streets. Therefore, keeping our beautiful coastal ecosystem healthy and thriving. I think you've seen the evidence right outside this door in the gutters. You've seen cigarette butts. I believe you've heard the numbers of the declining smoking rates. Please lead the way in protecting both public health and the environment by passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey there. Thanks so much for really picking up this issue and hearing everybody out on it. My name's Taylor Lane. I'm creator of the cigarette surfboard. We've made dozens of surfboards, collected cigarette butts, particularly in the Santa Cruz region. And, you know, there's good butts on our beaches, and there's bad butts. And we're talking about the bad butts, which ultimately, being a city that has a moral responsibility to our Monterey Bay Sanctuary, is the fact that, you know, a lot of times we hear about what are the real costs, you know, on table sheets of the taxes. But what's the real problem in externalities that these things face in our environment? How do we put the price of a healthy environment? And in a time when we're seeking leadership, I'd like to look at this bill as an opportunity to really lead the way for other jurisdictions around the world. And when we talk about what solutions might be, you know, the idea of biodegradable filters are really like what we talked about, these toxins, these toxins that leach out. And so this is really, you know, a statement that, you know, businesses can adapt. They have before. These aren't bad people, but at the end of the day, they are an extension of big tobacco. And the decision about what we're going to go forward with on this is really about, are we for the eight-plus years of policy work that we've worked? We've reached out? We've gathered data? The science tells us these things. Both the county and the city has unanimously passed this bill. It's a robust bill. It's got legs to it. People want to do this. People are fed up and tired around the world with this issue. We hope that this can be more of a step forward to re-looking at our relationship as communities and what we have to do in our environment, in our oceans. And so it's really about the fact that, in one sense, this is an extension of big tobacco. Are you going to stand with them? Or are you going to stand with the communities around the world, the ocean, and the rest of us, and the future generations forward? So thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, council members. Mayor Clark. My name is Katie Thompson. I'm Executive Director of Save Our Shores, and I'm here to express strong support for the ban on the filtered tobacco products. Cigarette butts are always one of the most common items we find in Capitola and across Monterey Bay beaches during our cleanups. This is a trend we have seen for decades, whether we look at data from 1980 or 2025. Over the past 10 years, we've collected over 15,000 cigarette butts in Capitola, despite more receptacles, education, and increased enforcement. That's recent data that we continue to collect today. Cigarette butts are the number-one most identifiable item we find, meaning that if we want to make the most impact on the litter on our beaches, a ban on butts is the most effective. Plastic pieces are next on our list, but it's impossible to trace these back to just one item. We can do that with cigarettes. We know the exact source, so let's do something about it. And unfortunately, biodegradable is a nice, flashy word, but complex conditions are required in order for true biodegradation to happen that just don't exist naturally, unfortunately. It is greenwashing. Capitola's coastline is one of the most cherished and iconic in California. As said before, it was recently recognized as part of a World Surfing Reserve, highlighting its global significance. Clean beaches are also vital to the local economy and local businesses. Every cigarette butt tossed on the ground harms both the environment and the economic foundation of our community. We urge you to take bold preventative action. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tessa Sanders, and I'm going into my sophomore year at Stanford. I grew up here in the Monterey Bay, and every weekend in high school, I was out on the sand with gloves and a bucket, cleaning cigarette butts from our beaches. I'm the only student from my high school who's ever gotten into Stanford. And in my application, I wrote about how this community has inspired who I am through being surrounded by people who care for the environment and for each other. That's why I'm here to support this ban. Cigarette butts are the single most common item I picked up during my cleanups, and they don't just disappear. They leach toxic chemicals into the sand and into the water. The truth is, it's not the youth leaving them behind. It's adults. Yet, it's the young people who are left to clean them up weekend after weekend. The next generation is ready for a change. We don't want to keep cleaning up this pollution. We want to prevent it. If this ban passes, I'll work with Scotts Valley and beyond to help spread this policy. Youth in our community are asking you to lead with us so that we don't inherit beaches littered with the same problems that we've been forced to pick up since we were kids. This ban is about protecting our ocean, our wildlife, and our community. It's about taking responsibility so that young people don't have to shoulder the burden of adults' waste. Please pass it, not just for us, but with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sam Rupel. I currently work on the Save Our Shores team. And when I moved to this area, I first lived in Capitola. I worked down in Capitola Village, and I was lucky enough to be able to walk there. I, like most others, am continuously in awe of the incredible views we get to enjoy here, but I quickly began to see the waste on these walks. I was first an amateur trash enthusiast before I became a trash professional. So the first thing I really noticed picking up trash on my walks across the cliffs, along the cliffs down into Capitola Village, was the sheer volume of cigarette butts. It shocked me then, and it shocks me now. My team and I run cleanups all around Monterey Bay every single year. These butts remain the number-one most identifiable item that we remove off of our shores. Cleanups are very much a tool that helps direct our actions to protect our bay and not a solution to this issue. The downstream solutions, like litter abatement, don't work. Signage is ignored. Enforcement agencies don't have the funds to police littering habits. Maintaining ciggy butt disposal sites has proved unrealistic, especially since we regularly find butts littered on the ground all around these provided collection boxes. We've exhausted all other options, and it's time to move upstream to stop this waste from being distributed locally, especially in these delicate marine environments we aim to protect.
Thank you. Welcome.
Greetings, City Council. I'm here for approval of this ban. I humbly come to you to say that this vote is more than symbolic. It's smart. banning cigarette butts in public isn't just about health, it's about savings. San Francisco spends $7.4 million every year from cigarette waste. Nationwide, another $26 billion in environmental damage. From cigarette butts, we spend over $240 billion treating smoking-related illnesses. The opposition says that they'll get it somewhere else. Here's an example. We stopped oil rigs from being built in the Monterey Bay so we could stop catastrophes like Santa Barbara. They still drill in other places, but our beaches are clean. The opposition says, "Why don't you ban plastics?" We have banned plastics—straws, grocery bags. They say they'll lose money. They'll make more money on other tobacco products, like free leaf, papers, vapes. They say now they want to clean up beaches, how they came out and cleaned up any beaches. Capitola can cut future costs now by choosing clean streets and the healthier lungs over toxic waste. Ecological psychology tells us people make better choices in better environments. So when we set clean standards, we inspire others to rise to it. This is about protecting our environment and our budget. Let's act with integrity. Let's lead. Let's reinvest in things that truly matter: our people, our health, our planet. Santa Cruz County can now unify and continue to be a golden beacon that shows our society how to evolve. So I ask, are you ready to make history again? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Duklaw. I live at 750 Bay Avenue. The subject is pedestrian safety on bay.
Excuse me, sir. We had a public comment earlier. This is for the ban of the cigarette butts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, city council.
Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Tara Leonard, and I'm the Project Director for the Tobacco Education and Prevention Program at the County Public Health Department. And we've heard a lot tonight from our environmental partners, and I thank them all because we have been working together for almost a decade now about this issue. But I can't let the evening close out without grounding this issue in the public health side of this argument. Tobacco butts are not like other litter. What happens to be left over after we have a useful, productive product that maybe most of us use, right? In fact, tobacco butts are the deadly toxic remnants of a product that is the most deadly commercial product known to mankind when used exactly as intended. Let's keep that in mind as we're having this conversation, and let's remember that in 1964, when the Surgeon General's Report on Smoking and Health was first published and started to make that deadly connection from tobacco and health very clear, how did the tobacco industry respond? Did they say, "Oh, we're going to take this deadly product off the market"? No, they did not. They came up with the filter fraud. Until then, filters had only been intended as a physical barrier for loose-leaf tobacco to keep it from falling in the smoker's mouth. But suddenly, after the Surgeon General's report, all of a sudden, filters were a health product. All of a sudden, filters were going to make smoking safer and healthier. That is really, really insidious, because by doing that, right at a time when many people would have been motivated to quit smoking, they were told, "Nope, filters are going to make it okay." And therefore, probably hundreds of thousands of people delayed or did not quit, and the industry continued to addict them to their deadly addictive product, which kills half a million people in the United States alone every single year. Filters are not just another form of plastic waste.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dolores. I'm here—I'm a health educator with Breath California. Breath California has been working on the environment and healthy lungs for over 100 years. Cigarette butts, like everybody's saying, it's not just litter. It's—we either—it's for the environment. If you're talking about health, it doesn't matter. Both of them are—it's affecting. So I'm here to support the ordinance, and I hope that you guys vote yes.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Clark and Capitola City Council. My name is Amber Jones. I'm a longtime resident in Santa Cruz, a mother, an ocean lover. I'm also former chair and education coordinator of Surf Rider Foundation Santa Cruz Chapter. I've spent countless hours over the years picking up thousands of cigarette butts along with my daughter off our local beaches, including Capitola City. It is evident we have a problem from cigarette butts, which is harming our environment, our marine animals, our children, and community members. Just like years ago, when we realized we had a catastrophic problem with styrofoam from single-use-to-go containers, plastic bags, and plastic straws harming our environment and killing marine animals, our county took action, including Capitola City, passing bans on all of those products. When the bans were being written and proposed, there was opposition from grocery stores and restaurants, saying it would hurt their businesses financially. But that was not the reality once the bans were passed and implemented. Their fears of loss of revenue and resistance to a ban ended up giving them a new opportunity to create revenue through reusable bag purchases. In addition, it led to their customers' use of alternative paper products like paper bags, paper straws, and paper-to-go containers. It is imperative that you work together with our other local leaders and stand united in passing the cigarette butt ban ordinance. We set the precedence with fracking and other bans here in Santa Cruz, and this inevitably will transfer across the state of California. So I really encourage you to look at the bigger picture of what our steps here locally will do, and I encourage you to understand that with all of these other bans, the businesses, local businesses, have survived, and they will survive, and there will be alternatives that people will revert to. 2027 is not that—it's a long time.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we've come to that point for no further public comment. Do we have one more?
I believe there's a couple more people lined up, Mayor.
Pleasure. Welcome.
I'm clearly a change of topic here. Mayor Clark, council members, Chief Ryan. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and also thank you for working toward implementation of some of the suggestions made at the last council meeting with regard to the bay and Capitola intersection.
Excuse me, ma'am. We're still working with the ban the butt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak on that? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Randy Wong, and I'm a volunteer with Breath California of the Bay Area and Central Coast. And just to reframe the way we think about words for things, I'd like to suggest that we think maybe instead of a lot of the terminology that the tobacco industry has tried to get us to talk about—the products that are at the end of tobacco products like cigarettes and cigars—that we think of them mostly as single-use plastic end pieces. and cigars, that we think of them mostly as single-use plastic end pieces. And I think thinking about it in that way really helps to clarify a lot of the issues that a lot of people have brought up over this evening. There are plastic end pieces that also contain toxins. At Breath California, we do so much, working with families with asthma, helping to protect the environment, holding quit-smoking groups for people who do want to quit. And the pervasiveness of tobacco use really means that for those who are addicted by the tobacco industry's attempts to get so much of our society addicted and frankly dying, we really want to have a culture of health throughout our communities. And starting with right here and the local communities right next to us, we can help do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Ted Burke. I'm a restaurateur. I wasn't intending to speak on that subject matter. I'm interested in the one agenda item that follows here about the village marketing. But I did have a couple opinions and questions that perhaps this council could consider. My understanding from listening to the speakers is, and one that I concur with, is cigarette butts are terrible for the environment, terrible health-wise, in every aspect. Great goal to get them off our beaches. But I also heard testimony that the city of Capitola already has a no-smoking ban on its beaches. So I really see, I don't understand the redundancy of having a ban on top of a ban. You don't allow cigarette of any type on the beach, and yet people are complaining that there's cigarette butts on the beach. My own business, we changed our policy years ago to disallow smoking, but the difference is, we enforce it. We enforce it anytime somebody tries to breach it. And I suggest that's what this council should do, is enforce the ban that you have now. You won't have any effect on these small businesses that are trying to maintain a livelihood just by enforcing the laws that you already have rather than creating something new. One thing that I've always pride Capitola on is its independence. It doesn't try to be Santa Cruz. In my opinion, and I'm sorry to say this, I don't think that's a high standard to follow in all cases. I think you need just to be a little logical and don't do something just symbolic that's going to have no effects. If this thing really worked well, and I didn't hear anybody testify, that the ban in the city of Santa Cruz and county have eliminated cigarette butts on their beaches. If it was effective, I'm sure they would have mentioned it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have no further speakers. Bring it back to council deliberation. I'd like to start on this.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everybody who came here tonight to present your opinion. These issues always have two sides, and they're always tough ones to decide for our community. For me, Capitola is a very special coastal town. We do have a beach, which is really the heart of our community. And we've taken a strong stand for a number of years that smoking, not only on our beach, but in most of Capitola Village, is not a good thing for us to have going on. And so for me, I think that banning cigarette butts, the sale of filtered products in Capitola makes sense for our community because we don't want them on our beach. And I do understand that this is going to have an impact on some of our local businesses. So if we were to adopt this ordinance, it would seem reasonable to me that we give our businesses at least another six months, perhaps say that, you know, it would start being enforced in like July of 2028. That would give time for our staff and our other economic partners to try and help our businesses to make certain that this is not going to be a crippling blow for them, give them time to think about reintroducing some different products that go along. So for me, I think, you know, Capitola's always been a steward of our beach, we've been a steward of our ocean. It's important to us as part of our community identity, and so I would go along and support the ordinance which would ban the sale of filtered products here in Capitola.
I just wanted to have a clarifying question. It might be for Chief Ryan, but will we be able to receive grants for enforcement, like sort of what we do with the ABC program for alcohol sales to minors?
Hi. Whether or not we would receive grants, I can't speak to that, but there are grant opportunities out there.
And so far, there are no grant opportunities for enforcing what we have going on right now.
There is a grant that is available that we had looked into applying for, that we were introduced to after the last presentation that we had.
Yeah.
So, much like ABC, you know, I think, you know, the Capitol Police Department has a reputation for working with our community and providing education and doing outreach, and so I would want to continue on that process, just like we have with ABC violations.
Okay, great. I just wanted to get that out there so that there is an option for us to have people that are, that we are supporting that can help us enforce because each individual butt on the beach is a lot harder to enforce than the sale of a pack of cigarettes. I really appreciate everybody coming out and hearing both sides. You know, definitely when this was first brought to my attention, I wasn't thinking business-wise, and I realized that it does impact the businesses quite a bit. I just want to touch on the fact that we do have butt receptacles all along our beach. We have plenty of other trash receptacles along our beach. We have education, we have signage. So those things, they're not working. They're not getting us to the point that we want to be at for our, the amount of cigarette butt litter that I can attest to is over the top compared to other things. You know, our environment is precious. It can't protect itself. It is our responsibility to protect our environment, and we are so fortunate to be here and have this backdrop and stand up for this backdrop, and I think that's where we really need to share the focus between businesses and community members alike. My vision when we first were presented on this issue was, okay, this is a time to pivot, just like a lot of people have mentioned. When we banned plastics, when we banned the straws and all that, this was a way to pivot. This was a way to move forward. This is forward-thinking. This is pushing in progression, not standing still. Just like, you know, Capitola is different. We have a position to set a precedent and to start the ripple effect throughout the county, throughout the state, throughout the Central Coast. And so I just would like to look at this more in a positive note, work with our local businesses, and I'm totally in favor of prolonging or extending when enforcement may start happening, and really work with our community development and figure out what, how we can streamline this change. I realize it's going to be a big change, and I know cigarettes are still going to come here, and that is a problem in and of itself, but maybe we can be sort of the vision of the change and allow public health and eco-friendly health to remain in the forefront for Capitola. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Echoing the comments I heard earlier, I think it's key, as a person who participates a lot in village and beach cleanups, I have firsthand seen the amount of trash and cigarette butts that are in our community. That does, I think, definitely affect our local environment. I, in echoing the comments, I think we have to probably do a better job in education and see if there's some maybe local grants that we could look at getting and enhancing. I know Scott Valley has some grant programs that they work with for tobacco awareness and stuff like that. Also, I think it's a good question that we heard from about enforcement, and I applaud our police department when we talk about enforcement and everything, it's about, you know, citation. What I'm proud about, what I see in our police department when they talk about enforcement, is communication and education. So I think, you know, with our leadership, our chief, and reaching out to our police department staff, and maybe having more in communication with people about what the rules and ordinances are other than just writing a ticket. I think a process of educating at the same time is more, is just as important. I am concerned about the economic hardship that this could put on, and so I could completely support a phase-in process. What does that exactly look like? I'd be interested in that. And then also, what can we do? And I think with our Economic Development Director, look at some support mechanisms that we can put in. Maybe we have ordinances around signage and stuff like that, but maybe there's some tolerances, or we can expand those opportunities to help support those businesses over a short period of time, but I think we have to look long-term and, you know, what the future looks like for the next generation. And I just think this is one of those important ones that we might look back in 10, 15, 20 years, and people might say we made the right decision and we're on the leading edge. So all in my comments, I think.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I have friends here who stand in both camps of this ordinance, and I have to be authentic and true to my values and what I believe in. My family and I and our three kids have been volunteering with Save Our Shores for years, and year after year, time and time again, the most common item we find are cigarette butts. And when we do see them, when my kids see them, we say, don't touch. And we got these long, you know, trash clippers that we pick them up with because I know they're plastic and they're toxic. It's the most littered item on our planet, and as a city, we recognized tobacco waste as a public health and environmental threat in 2023. From a public health standpoint, cigarettes, secondhand smoke can cause cancer, cardiovascular disease, and chronic respiratory disease. I see patients who are affected by these illnesses every day, from kids who come in for asthma to elderly patients who are suffering from COPD. I anticipate that this ordinance will help some of my patients quit smoking once and for all. It is time we enact policies that are truly, that truly protect human health, public health, and our environment. This is a health equity and environmental justice issue. This ban will reduce toxic waste entering our ecosystem and decrease all of the associated harms to our bodies and our communities. I'm sensitive to the potential impacts to local businesses, and I ask that our city and our staff work closely with our 10 tobacco retailers in Capitola to ease them into this transition. And I would support having that longer implementation window as well. I think this is a great opportunity for our local businesses to be creative and find different ways to bring in new revenue source. Thank you.
Okay, this was first brought to the city of Capitola over a couple years ago through the Commission on the Environment. So we've been working on this for quite a while. It's something we definitely need to make sure that we do, and we do for Capitola. What I'd like to see is maybe some implications or something that the police department can introduce in six months of education to the store owners. I think it's important that we get this ordinance on the books as soon as we can. And with that, I'd be looking for a motion.
I can make a motion for the recommended action to introduce for first reading by title only, waiving further reading of the text, and ordinance amending Capitola Municipal Code Section 538030 to prohibit sale of partially inconsumable cigarettes and cigars as amended by the staff. I second that.
So can I ask for a bit of clarification? So we're going to amend it so that it won't be enforced till July 2028?
Yeah, with education only to the retailers.
Okay.
So just for clarification, is that an amendment to the motion on the table? Councilmember Wespin?
It's more clarification.
Well...
So the motion made by Vice Mayor Morgan was to introduce the ordinance as amended by staff, and so the amendment that's being requested would be in addition to what's been provided by staff, so it wouldn't make the most sense to proceed with an amendment to the motion? And if that's the case, I would just clarify if the second accepts the amendment.
I accept.
Can I get a roll call, please?
I do also want to clarify, what is the date that you would like to be included in the amendment?
July 2028.
Okay.
Or wait, that's a, we want 26.
Well, we had in there January 2027, and so... You are correct. It'd be July 2027. Please. We'd get the extra six months. Thanks for that help.
Is that accepted? Councilmember Morgan?
Yes. Thanks.
We have everything we need. I'd like a roll call.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Wespin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Mayor Clark?
Aye. Ocean passes. That was a very long item, so at this time, we're going to take a 15-minute break. Yeah. I'd like to bring this meeting back to an order. Currently on 9B in general governance, Capitola Village Orphan Business Improvement Area Assessment for fiscal year 2025-26.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is our annual process to approve the budget for the Capitola Village and Orphan Business Improvement Area, or BIA, and approve levying their assessments. So as a reminder, the BIA was formed back in June of 2005 with the adoption of Ordinance 889. It's a business-based, self-imposed assessment district with assessments made by businesses within the district for improvements in activities that support and attract more business to the area. The assessments are determined by the classification of the businesses, and the assessments this year, which this is pretty consistent with the last four or five years, are set at 75% of the maximum for all businesses except for the hotels and lodging, which are at 50%. Next slide, please. So there's two different BIA groups, CBW BIA groups. One is the Advisory Committee, and then one is a nonprofit. The Advisory Committee, which was established in May of '05, adopted bylaws and appointed members in July of this year, and their role is to recommend to you guys, to the city council, on the expenditure of revenues derived from the levies of the business assessments and other matters related to the assessments. And then once that's approved, then it moves over to the nonprofit, which is the BIA, which is the actual business owners down there, that then carry out the scope of work, if you will, the business plan. Next slide, please. So for the annual assessment process, on June 12th, we set, we, sorry, we published a, we notified the public hearing, thank you, and which was continued to tonight. We've continued it a couple of times. California state law and our municipal code require that city council conduct this hearing annually prior to approving the assessments, which the BIA Advisory Board has recommended that we do approve this year for the annual plan as well as the assessments. There's no fiscal impact to the city. All services that are provided by the city, which is public works and finance, is reimbursed by the BIA. Those amounts are listed up there. Next slide, please. Oh, okay, so this slide changed a little. So the recommended nonprofit BIA also includes restricted TOT. So the recommended nonprofit BIA also includes restricted TOT. The restricted TOT was approved with the passage of Mesur J back in 2018 and allocates a, it's 0.45% of our total TOT towards local business groups, of which half gets allocated to BIA with the condition that 25% of the TOT is used for village improvements or enhancements. The restricted TOT revenues presented differently in the actual budget page. So in your agenda packet, I had listed $55,000 worth of what I called scope of work, which was the tasks for the BIA to carry out, which was tied to the assessments. On the contract, we listed not to exceed $90,000, which included the TOT. So I changed, I revised the attachment that was in your agenda packet, and it'll tie more to this right here, which that lists 89,700 of expenditures to be paid for with $55,000 of assessment revenue and $35,000 of restricted TOT revenue. These are the proposed assessments based on the business category and the number of employees. Again, this is unchanged for, I believe, five years now and is at 75% of the maximum allowable. So the recommended action this evening is to adopt a resolution levying the 25-26 BIA area assessments and accepting their business plan and to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the BIA not to exceed $90,000. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll open up council questions on this side.
Thank you. So there was, in the recommended action, there was three options, I think. And one was referring to a contract and another was referring to budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
With the contract, was the contract, what, is that the same contract, just redlined from previous years, or is this a new contract?
This is very similar to the contract that we had previously. This is our standard professional services agreement that we basically use with probably 99% of our vendors.
Okay. So that's, so same contract that was in the year?
It's, it's similar, yes. There's some, some changes from the other one. Off the top of my head, I don't know exactly.
Okay. And I appreciate the clarification on the dollar amount. So at that, at this time, I'll wait to hear other comments or questions. So thank you.
I just have one. I just want to clarify, we are not authorizing the final draft of the contract. This actually means we're just giving you direction to execute a contract with the BIA, correct?
Correct.
You can still work on the language and the details with them.
Yes, you can. If, I would say they would need to be minor amendments to the contract and subject to city attorney approval.
I see. So, okay, thank you.
If, if there were substantive changes, then we would come back before council, before we made any of those changes.
Vice Mayor Wespin?
Waiting here from the public first.
I will do the same. I'll wait to hear from the public. We will be opening it up for public comment. Welcome.
Anthony Guajardo, Chair of the BIA. Yeah, I think this is a kind of continuation from our last time. We were here discussing the assessments, and we worked with Jim and the city manager to dial in the assessment amount and the TOT revenue for the scope of work on what we'll be using those revenues for.
Hi, Karen Hannah. I'm also an officer on the board. And we're pleased with how things have been going with arrangements and the changes that we've made. So we're here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Also, Matt Arthur, executive member of the board, also here. Timmy Mc, what Karen just said, we're here to answer questions. Thank you.
So can I ask them a question?
Absolutely.
So we did, we did get a letter, a communication saying that you weren't interested in having the third part of this agreement approved. Is that where you are?
We weren't, we weren't given that portion of that contract until the agenda packet came out. So we'd only have the time to really gone through and redlined it and made any corrections prior to this meeting. So we've discussed the scope of work, and we discussed the assessment revenues, and we discussed making changes to the contract at our last meeting. We had not seen this version of it yet until the agenda packet came out, which isn't really give us the time. As small business owners, we don't have the time to redline it, discuss with an attorney to really make sure this is the right contract for us. We were just asking is, can we take this back, look through it, and then work with the city manager and attorneys to make sure it works for everybody in the fairness? But we would like the assessment to move through because that is the portion that we've already postponed so that we can collect the revenues needed to do the marketing.
Most of the changes that Leslie brought up, I think that's what's alarming everybody, is her email. A lot of those things were actually covered and seemed pretty clear to me at our meeting that we had prior to that. So yes, we didn't see the final, final document, but we had gone through it pretty carefully. I personally am, and then double checking with Jim, I think that any changes, it's like a word here or a word there. I think we're, you know, we've been operating really well with the city for the last 20 years, and this, this cleans up, cleans it up somewhat. And then, over the next year, we'll be continuing to work on the process of cleaning it up further. So I, for one, as an officer, am happy with going ahead with all three portions tonight.
So can I ask our city attorney a question? So it's, it's acceptable for us to go ahead and make, if we made a motion to say, you know, approve this contract, but it allows for minor changes to be made by the city manager and finance director and the BIA?
Yes, I would suggest that you do what Jim said, which is subject to approval by the city attorney. And we will, if there's anything significant, we'll bring it back.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds great. Any other questions? It looks like everybody's covered all the questions.
So I'll, go ahead.
I'd like to bring it back for deliberation and a motion.
Okay. So I will make a motion to adopt the resolution levying the financial year 25-26 Capitola Village and Orphan Business Improvement Area assessments and accepting the CVW BIA annual plan and budget and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the CVW BIA nonprofit in the amount not to exceed $90,000, with the understanding that there might be some minor modifications to the contract negotiated by the city and the BIA. And if there's anything substantive, it will come back to the council.
I'll second that. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Jensen?
Aye.
Councilor Orbach?
Aye.
Councilor Wespin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Mayor Clark?
Aye. Motion passes.
Bring us to Item C, the Capitola Mall update and amendment to agreement with Ben Noble Planning.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is an update on the Capitola Mall and also an amendment for our contract with Ben Noble Planning. So a recommended action tonight is to receive the update on the Capitola Mall, provide direction on zoning approach, adopt a resolution, amending the budget, and then authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment 1 with Ben Noble Planning. So I'm going to go over some background. There's been a lot that's occurred over the years. So first, quite a few zoning amendments. We'll also talk about general plan updates and more recent developments. So background in terms of long, if you could go back a slide, please. Long-range planning, in 2011, the 41st Avenue Capitola Mall revisioning plan was put in place. This is part of the general plan update effort. And then, in 2013, 2014, the general plan update was adopted by the city council. That was a long process. I wasn't here for it, but I understand many years were put into that, as well as the 2011 plan. And then, more recently, in 2024, this is an effort that started in 2020, it went from 2021 to 2024, the update to the housing element within our general plan. Next slide, please. Your general plan's your long-term planning document. Your zoning code is your implementation for, for those long-term planning documents. So back in 2010, there was a reduction to parking in the regional commercial zone and also the allowance, it used to be commercial-only allowance for mixed use. Then, in 2018, following that big general plan update, there was a community benefits section added to the code in which there is an increase in floor area ratio at the mall to 50 feet of height and then a 2.0 FAR, which brought the development potential much higher. And then, in 2018, when we did the comprehensive update to the entire zoning code, there was vertical and horizontal mixed use allowed. So you could have residential next to commercial. That was a big improvement in the code in terms of making projects viable. And then, we again decreased the parking on the site and allowed for mixed-use parking studies. And then, in 2022, more recently, objective standards were adopted for the multifamily and mixed use. And more recently, 2024, this past summer, we adopted many changes to remove barriers to housing. So prior mall redevelopment concepts, in 2019, there was an application by Merlong Geyer. It was a pre-application, and it included 629 residential units as well as 330 square feet of commercial. That project came to an end during the pandemic due to the changing economics. So the housing element implementation is really what we're talking about this evening. Within our housing element, there are two programs that really focus in on that mall site. It's Program 1.6, which looks at our development regulations within the zoning code, and then Program 1.7 for shopping center redevelopment. Within the sites inventory, which is where we identify which sites have the potential for redevelopment, the entire block, so the area between Claire's Street, Capitola Road, and 41st Avenue, we have in our sites inventory planning for, or room for 1,777 units of those properties within that block. Merlong Geyer property, property owned or could develop up to 1,125. On this slide, I have pretty much word for word what the deliverables are in our housing element. And I just want to, there's some key points here. So within the first one, to create a strong sense of urban design cohesion towards redevelopment. Also, to establish not just the Capitola Mall, but that entire block as the area for redevelopment. To increase our height, the, for buildings up to 75 feet within mall redevelopment. To define mall redevelopment as a mix of residential and retail commercial uses. And then, to allow greater floor area calculation by removing the floor area of the parking garages. And then, to develop, to adopt objective standards. So it's really, what we're here tonight discussing are these six items, and this is what you're tasked with for implementation. Next slide, please. So in order to do this, we were, I've reached out to the Merlong Geyer partners, and to date, we've had three meetings and then received a couple of letters. So in May 2025, we started the initial conversation with Merlong Geyer. And at that meeting, they requested that the city consider a form-based code. I'll go into more detail of what a form-based code is and what the advantages and disadvantages to that are. And then, a follow-up meeting in June, we got, we had just been introduced this idea. So we did our research. It was a time to just ask questions back and forth with one another and learn more about the idea. And then, in July, so between that time, I did a lot of research of what it takes to develop a form-based code. In our July meeting, I let them know, you know, I'm happy to bring a proposition, a proposal forward to the city council requesting more funding for a form-based code, but it was going to cost about $150,000 to $200,000, and then it would take approximately a year. Following that meeting, we received a letter from Merlong Geyer saying, actually, let's move, let's pivot away from form-based code. We'd rather you fast-track this and complete it by December 2025, because that is the timing that's listed in our housing element. And with that, that's why we're here tonight. So just looking at options and what, what the council, where you would like to proceed. Next slide. So tonight, before you, I have three options. There's an option for objective standards, one for expedited objective standards, and that is the preference of Merlong Geyer, and option three, a form-based code. The first option for objective standards, this would be an amendment to our zoning code and our general plan. It would include the increase to height and FAR. It includes three rounds of stakeholder meetings at different points in the process, and then one community workshop, and then also planning commission and city council study sessions. This would take through April of 2026, if all goes to plan. And then, estimated cost here is about $76,000. Next slide, please. So within this, the task to be completed is to amend Chapter 17.82, which is the objective standards for multifamily and mixed use. We'd look at circulation and streetscape, parking, vehicular access. Really looking at, right now, we have standards in place within this, within our zoning code, but this will take into consideration the type of architecture that we're expecting with mall redevelopment with heights up to 75 feet. So larger structures than we were anticipating when we first wrote this section of code. Next slide, please. The other section of code that would need to be amended is Chapter 17.88, the incentives for community benefits. And again, that's just updating the qualifications for mall redevelopment and including objective standards. Next slide, please. So within this approach, there would be three stakeholder meetings and one community workshop. Next slide. This just pictures of previous community workshops that have been hosted by Ben Noble Planning. That's for the multifamily. Next slide, please. They would draft objective standards. So here, you're seeing images of redevelopment and what the block pattern could look like in other jurisdictions, but similar work would be created for the mall site. Next slide, please. And then, the end result would be updated objective standards that would have images and explanations, making sure that buildings are, have articulation, and that massing is in the correct place and that the buildings integrate with the street and are well-planned. Next slide, please. The second option is pretty much what you saw for the first option, except the public engagement piece. So at the very beginning of this, there would be a stakeholder meeting with majority property owners on the site and stakeholders. And then, from there, the consultant would draft the amendments, and the public process would happen during the planning commission and city council meetings. The completion date for this would be January of next year, and the estimated cost about $46,000. And lastly, option three is the form-based code. Form-based codes have evolved a lot over the years, I will say. So when you're looking for examples of form-based codes, you definitely want to look towards more recent examples. In the past, they were really about the form of the buildings and how they interact with the street. More recently, their form-based codes have been developed that also talk about the land uses and what can occur in the buildings as well. So within this option, we would replace those sections of code that we just talked about with a form-based code, and it would be specific to that block for the mall. It would include design charrette, cohesive design standards, and a regulating map. Take about eight months and a cost of $162,000. Take about eight months and a cost of $162,000. So to get into the details a little bit more, so they would hold a workshop with community members and stakeholders. Next, they would create, sorry, it should say, create code framework and regulating plan. So they'll, from that meeting, they'll get the vision from the community of what they think mall redevelopment should, will look like and then start working through the code framework. So figuring out what are those different characteristics along the street frontage or internal to the project and residential versus mixed-use areas and your public areas. Next, they would draft the actual code section. So you'll see images of buildings and then the exact development regulations around those. Next slide. It also includes a regulating plan. So for the mall block, you would, we would have a regulating plan and it acts like a zoning map specific to that block. So, and it would outline different areas for public realm improvements as well as streets. One thing I want to hit, talk about with this regulating plan is you, to do a form-based code, you really need to have participation by all of the stakeholders within the block so that you can align those streets correctly, talk about, and figure out where you want your civic spaces, where the buildings belong. So that, that's a really important part that it, it really depends on having the developer, and not just Merlone Guyer, but also Target, Macy's at the table and helping develop that plan. Otherwise, you run a really high risk of spending a lot of money on a form-based code that is not effective because not all the stakeholders are at the, at the table. So comparison of options is here. The, I think the biggest takeaways are for community engagement. Options one and three really include a lot of community engagement. Timing, the second is the fastest with a completion by January and then the cost we've already gone through. And then just a comparison of options for just what is the end product that the city will get and what, what does it mean in terms of the developer and the redevelopment process? In terms of regulations, objective standards are a little less prescriptive and typically there's more room for creativity in the overall design. But the second, and that form-based code has typically been more prescriptive and less flexible. But honestly, this middle column, it's kind of up to us and what we put in those standards. So if you want it to have more creativity, you can make those standards less strict. If you want it to be very strict, in either option, you can make it really strict. So I, that was a, that's a hard one to calculate because we, we can direct how that ends up. The second one is the development, redevelopment approval process with the objective standards that would go to Planning Commission for approval unless we got a specific like state, like SB 330 application in which it's, that would still go to Planning Commission, but it's just the objective standards that they measure that against. Form-based code typically, because it's so prescriptive, you create more ways for those approvals to be approved administratively. But for really large development, I would see thresholds that would go to Planning Commission within that as well. And next slide, please. So fiscal impact, there's a range between $46,000 and $162,000. The funds would come out of our general plan maintenance fund. And yeah, I recommend, if we can go to the next slide. So tonight, we're looking for council direction on the preferred option, a budget amendment and to authorize a contract amendment with Ben Noble and then to continue coordination with Merlone Guyer and other stakeholders. I do have the next slide, which is when it's time to make a motion, kind of a fill-in-the-blank and pick your item because these motions can be tricky when you have three options on the table. And I did want to mention that at 2 o'clock today, we did receive a letter from Merlone Guyer Partners. It's as additional materials. I know you started at 3:00 today, so, but we'll be reaching out to them after this meeting for next steps. And in that letter, they did have a strong preference for option two. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. We'll start on this side. Ask the questions.
No, I, I think I'll wait because this isn't deliberations.
Right, I'll go on this side.
Could you just bring up again, just the steps we've taken or how the mall, the part I guess, like going back to 2018 when they came in, they had a plan and then we, which started this whole process of talking about housing, how it can look like. Since that period, there's been some asks and some requests. Can we just go over that, I guess I can refresh my memory on what steps we've taken as we kind of get to our final answer today?
So from 2018, from when we?
Well, I mean, we could go all the way back, but then in 2018 is when we had, is it 2018 when they brought in like the community plan, the meetings that we had at the Sears Building and stuff like that?
19, I think.
It was 19?
So in 2019, there was a community meeting at the Sears Building. And I would say there, there was a great turnout, probably 300 plus people. It was, it was packed and I think they had really good treats. So a lot of people came too. Cookies from, you know. So that was 2019. And then since then, so we're working through, we, they came to Planning Commission and City Council with a conceptual review. The comments were generally very positive. I think when we did the, the, we had a third-party review of the design. There were a couple of design critiques that were requested to modify with a project that would come back. And then there was also a request to help us with the economics of the project because it was, it was going to have an economic impact or a very slight gain to the city. It was almost a wash. So, so there was an ask for to introduce a hotel to the project, something there that really supports the city in, in order to provide the services for the extra homes. So since that date, we were working, we continued to work on the project, but it was about June or July of 2020 during the pandemic when they called and asked us to, they wanted to remove the project. Just because of the changing economics, there was a large theater involved in that design and just the change in economics as the construction prices were going up. And since then, Jamie and I will reach out at different times to Merlone Guyer to get updates. And just this year, they, they, they definitely were communicating during the housing element, asking for the additional height and the additional floor area ratio changes. And then this year, they've got a plant, a project manager associated with the project. So that was a big step forward. I think that was right before we met in May. I think we learned that in April. So that's where we've been since that project in 2019, as well as continued updates to our zoning code, our housing element. We've continued to work on implementation for the long-range planning and the implementation plans.
Is there also a change in the affordable housing percentage?
There was. So in terms of the required affordable housing or during, so there's a requirement for one out of every seven units to be affordable when a project comes in, if you've got more than seven units. When we went through the housing element exercise, there was also, we modified, we brought in a lot more additional units in order to have more market rate units associated with the mall property. And then the, the low-income households, we allowed to have, as long as they meet a certain size standard, they would be able to meet the requirements without deed restrictions. So the very low and extremely low would be deed restriction. But we made some, actually, I, sorry, the low, very low, those would all have deed restrictions, but for the moderate income units at the mall, there's also ability to build smaller units so that their market rate moderate.
And sorry, just one question, more of a, the, just comments I hear about the mall project, there are six owners on different parcels, is that correct, seven? Multiple different owners, how about that? And I've heard that they have, like, they all have to be unanimous consent or they all have veto rights on top of each of them. Is that true or is that, I'm just concerned, but we're talking with Marlon Guyer and all this stuff. What does, you know, Macy's impact on this overall project and what does the other owners
So at the mall site, and this might be a better one for the city manager, the REA, but there's a reciprocal easement agreement between the different property owners. And to make a decision for redevelopment at the mall, they have veto power over one another if someone does not like a proposal. So with the 2019 proposal, if say Citibank, when they were there, were unhappy with the proposal, I believe they have veto power on that decision. And Jamie, would you like to?
So, yeah, I think that there's, Councilmember Westman may have experience with this as well. There are certain entities, Director Hurley is correct, there's an REA, reciprocal easement agreements that basically tie everybody at the mall together and say, we're going to be a mall together. And we all agree, we're going to share parking and we're going to be retail and we're going to do food and things like that. There are certain partners that have veto authority over changes and certain parties that don't. Macy's, Target, formerly Sears, Sears &amp; Coles are now owned by Merlone Guyer. Those are the big entities that have veto authority over what can and can't happen. And so things like changes of use, like adding housing, adding movie theaters, building over parking areas, changing parking ratios, those are all the things that affect the REAs.
I always hear about the communication like between the city and Marlon Guyer. Are we talking to, do we talk to the other owners at the same time or is it just because they're the largest stakeholder?
So we talked to other owners. We've talked with Macy's this year, Target, tried to reach out, but the major, like the number one property owner that we've been talking with has been Merlone Guyer because they're two-thirds of the redevelopment potential on the site.
Okay, thank you.
So as presented, Capitola Municipal Code, Code Related to Objective Standards and Multifamily and Mixed Use Residential Development was adopted by council in 2022. During the development of the standards, I understand there were significant amount of public engagement, including Planning Commission and City Council study sessions, multiple stakeholder meetings made up of architects, developers, and residents. There were two Planning Commission meetings to review the draft standards and City Council meeting to review the draft. Is that true? Is that correct?
So I would need to go back and really review exactly what we did. I apologize. But yes, we did quite a bit of extensive work on that.
Okay. Since the Capitola Mall development will involve multifamily residential and mixed-use development, can the existing objective standards just be modified and applied to the Capitola Mall site?
So we would like to update the standards for the construction types that we're expecting.
So we can modify them. Okay, so given that we have objective standards, design standards, and HCD prescribed height, floor area ratio, and parking maximums already, what standards will the city be seeking input on from the community if we do that extended option one?
Sure. So we'd be looking at, so it's a, we're thinking about a bigger property, right? And so really looking at all of the six items that are within our objective standards, including parking, circulation, building forms, articulation. We could pull up the whole list on that.
So like details?
We're going to get into the details.
Looking at details. Let's see. And my question with regards to option three is like, how would highly prescriptive form-based codes that would constrain multifamily and mixed-use development on the Capitola Mall site more than the rest of the community accomplish the goal of fostering development and redevelopment on the site?
So for the form-based code, I think the developer was requesting that because it builds in, it's a very prescriptive, but it builds in predictability. And when you have a very prescriptive code, there's buy-in by the residents as well as the developer. So people know what they're going to expect. And so that, that would be some, I, I don't think everyone would see that as interfering with housing development. It really creates predictability in the process and therefore the outcome is something that the community has buy-in and as well as the developer.
The key here is Merlone Guyer Partners have, like, they have to be interested in working with us. If they are not interested in working with us, option three doesn't make sense because it's the highest cost, it takes the longest, and yeah, it requires their participation to be successful.
Are we deliberating or asking questions?
I'm, I'm still asking questions. Do you think HCD would support not meeting the December 2025 deadline for housing element? Because that, we already got an extension, is my understanding.
So?
So this would be an additional extension?
As long as we are working towards putting, like amending the code and in compliance towards the updates and we're working and collaborating with Merlone Guyer, HCD is, I, I've let them know about the current situation. I've had a conversation with them about, recently about what we're faced with. Before I knew Merlone Guyer was going to switch directions on the form-based code, and they said, as long as you're, you're working with each, they were very encouraged to hear that we were working together towards something and even though we were going in a new direction, it was going to take more time. As long as we're working towards that, they're not going to come, that's what they want to see, that's progress. And if we started slowing it down, then they?
Not going to de-certify us, is my fear. Okay, no. Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So just to clarify or understand, so say like whatever option we're using, it's, we're basing these choices off of the sort of the new, the 75-foot and then that 1,100 amount of housing units, not the 2019 600, whatever it was. Right, correct. Okay, I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Since, since we're all talking about this, so is it possible to have a fourth option? You know, because I, I would, I would like us to look at adding a fourth option into this in that I think, I know certainly at the Planning Commission level and at the council level, we've made it very clear to Malongueier that we want to see a project developed there, that we're absolutely willing to be flexible on height. You know, when they asked for 75 feet, we didn't bat an eye. When they asked for the increased floor area ratio, we said, okay, sure, you can do that. And we're to the point right now where I think we need to have Malongueier provide something to us about what they would like to build there so that if we're going to go through, you know, making zoning changes, we're going to, you know, come up with standards that work for them, we're working together to come up with a plan that can be approved. Right now, we're just saying, oh, well, we, we, we don't know what's coming in. We don't know what's going to happen. And we want, we want to work with them so that if they bring something in, it's going to be something that we're easily going to be able to approve and endorse. You know, we, we want to have some sort of partnership here. And in most areas of development like this, clearly you can't ever force a developer to come in and, you know, build something. But I think if we can communicate with them that, you know, we're open, we're interested, just give us a little more. Don't come in one meeting and say you want a form-based code and we jump around and hire people to get information on that. And the next meeting, you say, no, you don't want a form-based code. I mean, what, what direction are we going, what, what direction are we going in? And I certainly think, you know, before we pick one of the other three options, we ought to at least say, you know, give us something so we can help you be successful in developing. so we can help you be successful in developing this project in Capitola. Because we want it, you want it, let's work together and make something happen. So I just feel, you know, very uncomfortable just going down this path with no, nothing may ever come of it. Because they may look at this project and say, oh, well, you know, the 75 feet wasn't really the important thing. It was something else that we needed to have. And then we have to go back and start making more zoning amendments and more changes. So I just think there's a way of being more thoughtful in our approach with Marlon Guyer, with our approach with, you know, we want to have the housing, we want to make it possible, but we also want a viable project for Capitola. This is our biggest piece of property. This is, you know, this is the biggest thing that's ever going to happen in town, folks. And so let's figure out a way to work and make it happen productively for the developer and for us. So I'd like to see a fourth option.
Yes. I would like to piggyback on Councilmember Jensen's question. Other than Marlon Guyer, are the other stakeholders had interest in one, two, or three? Have you heard from any of them?
No, I have not.
All right, I have no further questions. We'll take it out to a public comment. Well, thank you for that. Welcome.
I'm sorry. The mall property is everything that Susan just said it is to the community. And having said what I said earlier, going to option two, where you don't really have any public involvement, as long as, you know, the public hasn't heard 1,700 units, they've heard 600 units. So that would be kind of a shock to them. But with what Susan was suggesting with an option four, that gives an opportunity for the public to be educated and understand that there's something bigger coming and not feel completely disenfranchised and left out of the conversation. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Janine Roth. I have family that lives in Capitola. I'm also a volunteer lead with Santa Cruz Y M B. Thanks for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm sure you saw our letter. In short, we support option two. We agree with that the mall is one of the most important places for housing and revived retail in the city. It's a super important part of the housing element, no doubt about it. It also provides a huge amount, not only of the general arena, but also a large amount of the affordable housing that Capitola is committed to. As you saw in Director Hurley's presentation and as Marlon Guyer's letter goes into further, many of the zoning modifications that we're talking about here have already been committed to, the height, the far parking, and so on. Those are some major concerns for the public. So those have already been, those have already been discussed through the housing element process, through the public hearings there. As was noted, you already have objective standards for the multifamily homes. Your 41st Avenue visioning project is another thing that's coming down the pipeline, and it's a consideration for wayfinding and street patterns and place making, et cetera. So what's in front of you is really, how do you want to put those standards into the code, the zoning code? You heard earlier about public engagement at the planning commission and city council. There have been times when I've been the only person at a planning commission meeting. So I don't think that talking about roof pitches and building articulations are going to be what draw the public. I just don't think that that's what's going to really engage the public. It's going to be, what is the design and the plan for the mall? And putting the zoning standards quickly into the code gets Marlon Guyer back here with a design and a plan. And you can do the Sears-like community meeting with an actual image and design for the mall that the public can comment on. So I feel like there's a little bit of a chicken and egg here, but Marlon Guyer won't, probably won't bring back a design without seeing those standards codified in your code. So there's a legal basis for meeting the December deadline. And Marlon Guyer goes through a lot of that in their letter. Just know, it's not really always up to HCD about whether you decertify a housing element. A court can decide to decertify your housing element. So let's go with option two. Let's meet the deadline. Let's get the standards into your code. And let's get going with a design for housing and retail and everything that people in Capitola want. It's a wonderful opportunity, so please support option two.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm not yet a new planning commissioner. I haven't been sworn in, so, but I have been a planning commissioner in the past, and I spent some time on this project. And was looking at this stuff today. And unlike the woman before me, this is in all of our backyards, and I think we really need to take some time. I like the option of considering the number four option. I think, you know, I went some, over some of this with Katie today, form-based versus some of their options. And the form-based gives a lot of flexibility for what we won't call spot zoning, but to do some different zoning within that, it takes a little more time. And I think the one thing that I liked about it, and I think listening to some other statements tonight, is it gives a lot more clarity to those people who are surrounding that area, who live in Capitola, as Councilmember Westman said, and others have said, this is, this is one of our largest projects. This is something that really does define Capitola. I mean, we look at the wharf as a historical piece, Rispin Mansion, some of the village things. But that 41st Avenue corridor, the mall, really does define Capitola. I think we need to take our time. Marlon Guyer's been in and out since, well, for the last ever year, since 2011, we've been working on projects with them. I think having clarity for the public, it gives some time to look at that. And I think I would really encourage you also to look at the fourth option of talking to Marlon Guyer. And then if need be, then, you know, look at one of the options. It gives the input by the community, gives us a solid understanding of what's going to be expected, as well as Marlon Guyer. And I think meeting expectations ahead of time certainly makes it easier as far as clarity and transparency to the process. So, thank you.
Thank you. See, no further public comment. I'll bring it back for deliberation and options for number four.
Yeah, and hearing the comments, everything, I completely agree with Councilmember Westman's option four. I think it's a way of bringing everybody to the table. I'd encourage the other stakeholders to be involved in that at the same time. Hearing tonight that they do have veto rights, I'd hate to see us get too far down the road and then have conflict even amongst just owners that doesn't even affect Capitola directly. So with that, I will leave it at that under comments and some deliberation. But I like the way heading towards number four personally myself.
So I agree with being more thoughtful in our approach. I agree 100% with working collaboratively, collaboratively with Marlon Guyer. But I also don't want to create more unnecessary barriers to development. This is, we've been talking about the mall for decades. I want to see something happen. My preference, preference would be option two. It's the quickest, the least expensive option. It meets the housing element requirements and the deadline. It aligns with property owner preference. And there are predictable design outcomes that reflect the community input received during development of the citywide objective standards in 2021 and 2022. I don't want to be put in a position of selling our residents the illusion that we have a huge amount of local control that can dictate exactly what can be built at the site. The mall owners have many state laws that they can utilize to get around whatever constraints that the city puts in their way. I would rather provide a simple, simple objective standards that allow design flexibility by the end of this year so we can get a project approved at the site by 2027. Based on Programs 1.6 and 1.7, quote, "If it becomes apparent," this is quoting, "if it becomes apparent that redevelopment of the mall site is not achievable in the planning period, the city will develop alternative strategies, including but not limited to rezoning to meet the sixth-cycle arena requirements," end quote. We should move forward with option two and keep things moving and increase the likelihood of getting a project within the desired timeframe. Like our speaker said, people are interested in seeing a design. We have to move things along so that Marlon Guyer can come to us with a design, with a proposal, with a project. So then we can, can talk about it, and our residents can chime in on what works and what doesn't for them.
Comments up here?
So, so I agree that, you know, we want to get a project, and we want to get a project approved, and we want to get something going. And so what is the best way to do that? And for me, the best way to do that is for us to have a cooperative working relationship with Marlon Guyer. And to date, we don't, we don't know what they, we don't know much about what they want because they haven't communicated that to us. You know, we, we don't know if there's going to be, you know, a need for a, you know, hotel to make money. Because in all honesty, this has got to be a project that is at least revenue neutral, if not a project that helps generate something financially for Capitola. And so, you know, I would like to at least communicate with Marlon Guyer rather than just say, oh, well, we're going to adopt a bunch of new standards, and we hope that that works for you. I think it would be much more effective for us to say, okay, Marlon Guyer, you don't have to come in with, you know, architectural drawings. You don't have to, you know, be at that stage. But let's come in, give us some, you know, preliminary plans. You want a, you know, five-story residential here and a hotel there, and we're going to have a little retail, or, you know, some, one of the mall stores is going to move somewhere else on the site. We need, we need to be working with them and have some information so we can work down to a place where we can all agree and we can all get it approved. It's going to take a lot of support from this council with the community. I mean, we, we have to respect our community as well, and we have to be able to explain to them, we need this housing. We need this project. We need these things to happen. I know that they're working right now on the 41st Avenue revisioning plan. We have a whole thing going on on 41st Avenue improvements that are going in. We need to coordinate all of this and make it work together. And, you know, I would be willing to say, you know, perhaps what we ought to do is, you know, continue this for two weeks, you know, give staff, and even if you want a subcommittee of the council who'd be willing to talk to Marlon Guyer and sort of show our support for wanting to help them, wanting to make a project happen. You know, I think we would be willing to do that. So as I said, I think right now I would like to see us continuing for two weeks, be able to at least have some conversations with them and say, come on, let's, let's make something happen for our community together. So.
I just wanted to echo, I want to echo some of the comments Councilmember Westman made. Frankly, that has been the message staff has been delivering to Marlon Guyer is that seeing a project is really going to help us all understand what we're trying to do, rather than writing standards to protect us against dragons and unicorns. We're writing standards, working together towards a project that we have a shared vision to achieve. Marlon Guyer so far has been unwilling, but I, I think seeing the council's dedication to that, supporting staff's position in the past that we've taken, I think could be helpful. And the concept of having a subcommittee of council that could meet with us, with Marlon Guyer, to talk through how this could work, I think would be great. And I think it's worth taking a swing at, for sure.
I'd be happy to join that subcommittee.
Well, I feel like deja vu a little bit, just because we've gone back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, and like, continuously, we're saying, okay, okay. Like, I mean, we've seen renderings of what the 70-foot height looks like without the parking, and like, we've seen all that. And so what is the likelihood that they're going to give us something before we give them something? Because we continually give, and we're not getting anything. So, I mean, I'm in agreeance. Like, I think we need to see something from them. I'm just, I'm nervous that it's going to, like, gunk up the flow and that it'll end up taking more time, which, if time is what we need, that's fine. I just want, I don't want them to be like, oh, well, Capitola's the thorn in our side, and like, it doesn't really matter to us, so we're not going to bring them something.
For me, it's worth two weeks at least, just to, you know, explore this and see if we can go somewhere with it, rather than just go down a path that may not get us close to where we want to be. And, you know, I, I think the important thing is, you know, communication and working together so that we can have a project we can all be successful with. And.
I'd like to jump in on that.
So I would make a motion that we continue, oh, sorry.
Sorry. All right. This is going to be the one of the biggest things we do in Capitola. So taking two weeks, it's not, it's not a long time. But I'd like to see our subcommittee to reach out to Marlon Guyer and the other stakeholders and let them know that we're committed to see the project, see it through. But we need a little more information so we can share with the public, but really emphasize that we are ready to see the project and get moving on it. And I'd like to see that come back in two weeks.
So I'll make a motion that we continue this item to our next meeting, that we appoint a subcommittee of two council members to join in the conversation with Marlon Guyer to, you know, express our desire to work with them and make a project come forward. And we'll work with staff and see what we can accomplish in the next couple of weeks. And if not, then we'll be back with options one, two, and three.
Great, it sounds like we have Councilmember Westman and Councilmember Orbach.
I second your motion, right? Did you make a motion? You made a motion?
Just to clarify who.
Works for me.
Okay. Can I get a roll call, please? Do you have everything first?
I think so. So the motion on the floor is to continue the item to September 11th and form a council subcommittee composed of two councilmembers who can engage with the mall property owners and return to provide an update on September 11th, seconded by Councilmember Orbach, and then amended by the mayor to appoint councilmembers Orbach and Westman to said subcommittee, accepted by Councilmember Westman. And with that, I have a roll call of Councilmember Jensen.
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Westman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye. Motion passes. Getting late, I got to put my glasses on. Bring us to item E, Lift Drive Resiliency Project, and?
E.
D. There we go. I'm sorry. Item D, Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant for the Capitola Active Transportation Plan.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. Tonight, we're asking to approve a resolution to move forward with a sustainable transportation planning grant from Caltrans. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background on this particular grant. We applied in January 2025 as the lead applicant with Ecology Action, a local transportation group, as a co-applicant for a $450,000 grant from Caltrans for sustainable transportation planning, specifically an active transportation plan. Staff has received a conditional award letter, so that's a letter from Caltrans asking for corrections and clarifications, some financial documents, and then a resolution, which is required for final award. So between the time that we applied for the grant in January and receiving the conditional award, we had several hearings regarding municipal code. Please, one slide back, please. Section 8- Section 8.72, more commonly known as MDRL, and received some direction from council. Next slide, please. Thank you. So with that direction, staff returned to Caltrans and amended some of the grant to make it compatible with our Muni code. So the title, as applied, was Connecting Capitola Village ATP. This has been changed to Capitola Active Transportation Plan. The scope, as included in your agenda packet, also made several changes to the scope of work in expanding the focus as to a citywide plan. So specifically, our major arterials and collectors around the city removed all references to the Coastal Rail Trail and just clarified the roles between Ecology Action, our co-applicant, to organize the outreach and some of the partnerships with our stakeholders. There are many required by the grant language. And then the city obviously is the lead agency, plan development, final plan review and acceptance. Also included in your agenda packet were some Caltrans requested additions, specifically wanting us to directly address the seasonal variability in our population as we are a known tourist destination. Next slide, please. So the purpose of the project ultimately really is to improve the safety of pedestrian and bikes and really everyone who uses our streets and sidewalks and bike lanes around town. This would be our first citywide plan. Many cities have similar plans. The city of Capitola has not developed a plan to date. There was a bike plan completed over a decade ago that really isn't relevant to what's we have going on in Capitola anymore. So the project would assess our existing conditions, our 2025 conditions, and identify barriers to successful multimodal transportation, recommend infrastructure and programmatic solutions. So programmatic solutions being things like education and outreach for bikes, for middle schoolers, and things that are not infrastructure related. And then really focusing on safety, equity and accessibility. So that's for our seniors, our youth, our people with disabilities. So everyone can use our facilities or in our roads. Climate resilience as required by the grant, many state objectives, and also with our climate action plan, soon to be in progress. And then consistency with policies on the local, regional and state level. Next slide, please. So the project purpose is really to improve some of the conditions we have on our streets. So this is a comparison from 2017 to 2020, a three-year period of bike and ped vehicle incidences. Those all get recorded by our police department and shared in a statewide system called Tims and Switters. And then a three-year period between 22 and 25. And so there's been a notable increase in pedestrian crashes with vehicles and bicycle crashes with vehicles, including e-bikes, which were only more recently recorded separately from other bike collisions. I will say that there is no comprehensive data on bicycle pedestrian collisions, but we also know those to be a factor, particularly in our village. I believe there was one out last Friday. So countywide, countywide, the California Office of Transportation Safety also does metrics comparing us to other communities around the state. Santa Cruz County is consistently among the worst for California, in California counties for bicyclist injuries and deaths. I want to say they're number two and number three in the past three years. And then specifically for Capitola, among peer cities, so cities of our size, we have ranked number two and three in pedestrian injuries specifically for the senior community. Next slide, please. So the purpose is to really reap the benefits of a completed ATP plan is that we have a documented roadmap influenced by traffic data and community outreach for safer biking and walking around the city. It really opens doors to grant funding. ATP grants, you cannot apply for that funding without an ATP plan. That also goes for other state and federal grants. It again aligns with state and local and federal policies for not only a traffic safety but also climate resilience. And it really shows that the city is proactively addressing these concerns that we know that we have documented issues with. Next slide, please. So our project partner again is Ecology Action, again, lead on outreach and partner coordination. The city of Capitola is the lead agency. And then there's also a future consultant to do the technical analysis. So a engineering consultant should really take that hard data and network planning and doing conceptual designs and making sure that what we're suggesting is achievable. Next slide. So the fiscal impact, the total project budget is $510,000, $450,000 from the grant and a $60,000 in kind match. So that means staff level effort, not cash directly. The consultant contract, again, that is not being awarded tonight would be $145,000, which would be done through a request for proposal and brought back for council consideration. So just to break down a little bit, that staff kind commitment, typically we bill around $200 an hour average for staff time. That's an average over director and lower level staff. That comes out to about three hours a week for this project, one hour a week against, against the two primary staff for this project, but also in public works. It also involves the clerk office, economic and community development and city management for review, and really considering how those departments interact with some of our traffic decisions in the city. Obviously that won't be an hour every week. It'll come in bits and spurts and really the bulk of that time that the city staff will be doing is in community outreach and in draft plan development. So next steps would be to improve this, the resolution and the agreement with Ecology Action included in your agenda packet. That allows us to move forward with Caltrans and they estimate to have a finalized grant for signature in November. From then, in January, we can issue the RFP for that transportation consultant. And once we have everyone on board, start doing our community outreach and plan development in the spring. This would be a total of a two-year project. Next slide, please. And with that, the recommended action is on the screen and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Bring it to council questions.
I have a question. How was the partner selected? I'd like to enter into the process of applying for the grant.
So typically with these kind of grants, it is wise to have a consultant on board. Staff typically does not have the experience or the ability to do these kind of developments of these plans. It's preferred to have a local consultant. This is a consultant that has done several plans throughout Santa Cruz County. They're located in Santa Cruz. There are other consultants who do this type of work, but none locally.
And was this, so it's just a selection of the city or was it RFP process? Or is it, I mean, you select as a consultant that you have interaction with in the past?
This is a consultant that many other cities in the county have worked with, but no. Was there a competitive RFP process? There was not.
I guess a question and comment in looking at the process that they outlined, would there be buy-in from the council that we could add additional steps to the overall process that they're proposing? It seems like there's, I didn't see in there about like going back to planning, talking to planning department. There are some key, I think, user groups that I didn't see in the list. We talked about biking clubs and stuff like that, but you know, one of our biggest things that we get challenged with, I think in the city is when we talk about, we hear from our business owners is about safety and bike traffic and stuff like that. Yeah, I, you know, so I was wondering, would we be able to make sure that we included somebody like a member from the PIA, the chamber, seniors groups and stuff like that? So we have an overall vision of when we're trying to plan out this direction?
Absolutely. So the scope of work did include particular partners that to be competitive for the grant, Caltrans was looking for, but there was always an opportunity to add more. One of the first steps of developing this project would be to come up with a community outreach plan, which would really, again, identify the, all of our stakeholders and the amount of meetings we're going to have and which commissions we're going to go to. So that would be the very first step in starting this project.
Okay. I'll save my other comments to deliberation. Thanks.
I'm here.
Yeah. My concern was this just seems like one of those projects where we're going to have consultants go out and develop a plan and bring, you know, sort of a final plan to the city council. I really don't see, you know, any interaction with the local, you know, community listed in here. And I was a little concerned about, you know, they actually list who's going to be on the technical advisory committee and that. And it seems like that committee should definitely be expanded to, you know, include more people. So if, if we approve this, are we committed to this plan or can we modify it additionally?
We are committed to reaching out to the ones we listed in the grant scope of work, but that does not restrict us to including additional members.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm good with the questions now, so we will bring it to public comment. Welcome.
Back. So thanks again for letting me speak. I sent an email, but I missed the deadline, so I don't think you got to see it. So I just wanted to come up here and make you aware of it and, and let you know. Parking and automobile traffic have been a long issue. I've worked with the museum enough to know that we've never had enough parking. We've always had too many automobiles. And the bicycle is really, as a transportation mode with the advent of the electric bike particularly, it's definitely something that's a new issue worth prioritizing. And I applaud the city for engaging in the development of an active transportation plan. I'm not familiar with Ecology Action. I'm a little concerned in looking at the, the, the package that they're going to have the lead in the outreach. And with everything I said earlier, I think this is a formula, the baseline plan for us, and it's a very transformative plan. And I just think that we should take more of the lead in the outreach and making sure that, that they know that the Pacific Cove Memorial Park no longer exists. So they, they shouldn't be listed as a stakeholder. And to underscore what councilman Jensen said, there are stakeholders that aren't listed that need to be listed before we approve everything. I'd like to see you guys add that in so we make sure that it's not just something that comes because we're too used to having consultants go off and talk to the people they want to talk to and then come back with a plan. And by that point, it's too late to change it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mine was more of just a question confusion because it says an active transportation plan, but is this only relating to walking, biking, e-bikes and stuff like that? Because to me, an active transportation plan, especially for the city, would need to involve our buses and, and other forms of, of transportation that people would have access to and stuff like that. So I'm just confused what the, the grant covers specifically. And then, and then if, if it's not limited to just physical type of transportation, then how are we going to include like metro, the fact that, you know, like the city of San Francisco just finally approved automated vehicles for the, the transportation and so on. So it's more of a question of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know further public comment? I'll bring it back to council deliberation. Got left off on the other side. Let's start here.
Well, for me, I, I do have concerns about this particular grant and I know it's very hard to say that we're not going to accept grant money. But, you know, this, this, this was a grant as our public works director pointed out that was applied for a while ago, mainly to focus on Capitola Village. And now, you know, we're sort of trying to change it and say that it's going to be for the entire city of Capitola. And I, I, I am concerned about how many of these things, we're just having, you know, consultants go out and do a plan for us and it comes back and we're supposed to, you know, approve this particular plan. I have concerns that, you know, we didn't do any kind of RFP, that instead we had another agency come to us and say, let's jointly apply for, for a grant. I, I do have, you know, for me, with everything that's going on, all of the unknowns that are going on in, you know, many of our areas, we're doing plans for 41st Avenue right now. I'm not certain if this is, you know, the, the time to take on, on this particular project.
So yeah, I guess I have maybe, maybe a follow-up question. Sorry, my screen. So kind of going off of what council member Westman was saying, this originated sort of from the village, but now in bold, it's saying citywide plan. Like how, if this dollar amount was sort of allotted towards like a village-sized area, how far would that go for like a citywide type project?
That's a great question. So for something like the village that's been analyzed multiple times for different directional roads, do we close all the roads? Many different iterations, I have six or seven different reports at my office of historical data. That was anticipated to be a very heavy lift, which is why the original grant application was really focused on that area because it, even though it is a small area, there's a lot of things to consider with the businesses, with it being our tourist area, with it being very constrained right-of-way, that we knew that would take a lot of time and energy. So while I completely understand your point of like that being a very small area and the city being much a larger area, very, there aren't really other areas in the city that require that kind of attention to attention.
So moving forward with our 41st Avenue, like this grant wouldn't apply to like the bike lanes paying for that or anything like that or?
So it's anticipated that, oh.
This is just the plan?
Yes.
It's just a plan. Doesn't actually construct anything.
But it will increase our likelihood of getting future grants. If we have an ATP plan, then we will be eligible for a lot of grants in the future for safer bike lanes, safer pedestrian walkways for our residents. This is free money. Sorry to jump in, but this is free money. We should do this plan and have a plan so that we can apply for future grants.
Oh, we're asking more questions. I'd like to jump in there. Question would be RFP, where would that set us? How would it set us back? Would we be in jeopardy of losing the grant if we tried to look at what maybe somebody else might have to offer?
You mean to replace Ecology Action?
Yes.
At that point, as far with the grant, we cannot amend our co-applicant.
So we can't use another?
So we can use an RFP and we would use an RFP to get the technical consultant, but as far as the public outreach, the, all the task that Ecology Action is doing, that was our co-applicant and so they are our party to our grant agreement.
So it's kind of tied together?
Yes.
Can they take the grant to another city and offer to partner with another city? Or is this like grant tied to us and if we don't do it, then it just dissolves? There's no action to be taken?
It, right. If the city rejects the money, it'd be reallocated to someone else who applied for the grant. So.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Go ahead. Thank you. I'm sorry, I just, I forgot what the timeline is for the, the grant process, to do this plan.
It's a two-year project.
One of my concerns are with the changing dynamics of so many things going on in our whole community and everything. And the rail trail project that looks like, you know, the final draft report we coming for and what the cost is. And then also, is there enough funding for all the segments that are on the rail trail? How would that play into effect if for some unknown reason, there was not complete funding for a certain segment that runs through Capitola and we're developing a plan for transportation, but we think there's going to be a, a trail plan, but then it doesn't? And then how does that, how do you see that like overlap? It seems like time is not absolutely perfect in that. I was just wondering what your professional opinion was.
So an active transportation plan, like many of our planning documents, is meant to be a living document. So I think, right, at some point we'd have to make a decision of how, if we address that at all in our finalized plan, that it rounds out our grant and we deliver to Caltrans. But for the purposes of us using here in the city, that is something we can continue to amend and update depending on how other regional transportation projects work out.
I guess, oh.
Can I add one?
Sure.
Another point is I think that if ultimately at the end of the day, the county's rail trail project collapses for whatever reason, if we have an ATP plan that's approved for Capitola, we could apply for our own ATP grant to build our own trail, which is what the city of Santa Cruz did. I think they used ATP funding to build out a lot of their segments. So having this plan gives us more flexibility moving forward.
segments. So, having this plan gives us more flexibility moving forward. The other point I would just reiterate is, is, you know, we're feeling a lot of pressure at staff level in terms of traffic, how to move traffic, and pedestrian safety, bike safety. We've been seeing a lot of bike, really pretty significant bike accidents this last couple of years, much more so in my memory of the way it was 10 or 15 years ago. So this is an opportunity to proactively try to get in front of some of this stuff. So, staff's recommendation would be to accept it. These aren't the kind of relationships where you can say, you know, no, and then turn around and just tap into the same funds next year. So...
Continue on to my question. I think one of the comments I made earlier this evening was looking at where we're going as a city from a, like, a master plan standpoint. And it seems like we're going to have a working session. You know, I could be in favor of, like, continuing this, to look at where are we going, you know, when we talk about staff time, and I see, you know, all these hours in time, and we hear about all these different projects that are still coming forward that we haven't seen, seeing some sort of a master plan of how this is going to work and how it overlays. And I think it's going to get down to, as a council, working with staff, we're going to really have to make some tough decisions on what, we can't do it all, or we can do it all at a Level 5, or we do want to do, you know, half at a Level 10. And I think looking at this and looking at all the projects that we have coming up, all in a working session, and to understand how those all kind of come together, intersect together, I think is important to see if, I think we all can agree when we talk and the city manager lays out, you know, safety, absolutely child safety, adult safety, bike safety, everything are very important. But we can't do it all at one time, and we can't do it continuously. So I would like to have some, you know, dialogue when we look at, or overall, everything that we're doing in the city. Is this something that we can take on right now? And if we can, what slides or what doesn't? And to make that adjustment when we look at everything at one time. Thank you.
So, since the director is here, do you think this would be a heavy lift for your department? Do you have the staff to do this work, the scope of work that has been presented with this grant?
So to your point, we do have other transportation plan, or planning projects going on. We have the Ave Avenue corridor project moving forward. We have a 41st capital plan and a planning plan moving forward. The idea is to incorporate those completed plans into our ATP plan. Both of those, we anticipate being more or less complete at the end of the year. And so, there's an opportunity, with those planning efforts being complete, to start a new planning effort.
That's very reassuring. Thank you. You know, we're here to make decisions, not to continue items, multiple items, really complicated items for the future. I think this is an easy one for me to move, and I'd like to move the recommended action as is. And I hope we can move forward with this.
I'll second.
Yeah, before we get a second, I'd like to just add that I do appreciate that it's a living plan and a living document. So if we can revisit it more often than not, and so that we stay focused, I think is something we can do. Looking for a second?
I second. I second second time.
I get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Jensen?
Nope.
Councilor Orbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Westman?
No.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Hi.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-2.
Trying to do the math. That brings us to item E, Cliff Drive Resilience Project and Local Coastal Program Update.
Hey, me again. Here to give you an update on one of our current transportation and bluff stabilization projects, our Cliff Drive Resilience Project. So, as a reminder, the purpose of this project is to mitigate bluff erosion inclusive of the sea level rising stormwater impacts while enhancing pedestrian, bicycle, and coastal access along Cliff Drive. We received funding to start this project from FHWA related to the 2023 storm events. So this is what's called emergency relief funding from FHWA. We also have funding from a local coastal plan grant from the Coastal Commission. Next slide. So the objective for tonight's presentation is really to provide you all with the status update. We were here approximately a year ago, the last time we've talked extensively about this project, to receive any input you and the community may have on this update. Really, it's an informational item, though. So we're not looking for any decisions tonight, final decisions this evening, just direction. And then, the purpose also is to outline kind of where we are and next steps. The next time you see this project, we'll be considering some LCP amendments, and then we'll have subsequent hearings to review project-specific details. So with that, so the last time we were here, in August of 2024, we gave you several alternatives for how to address bluff erosion on Cliff Drive. One was a do-nothing option, one was a temporary option, and then the other one was full bluff protection. So, we were directed to move forward with a continuous bluff stabilization, and that including pedestrian and bike improvements. And this cross-section here was kind of a tentative plan of how we were going to move forward. Next slide, please. So since then, we've done some pretty pictures. So here's a rendering of a fully built-out project with the idea of full bluff protection. We get into this slide again a little bit later in the presentation. Next slide. So, since moving forward with this project, we've gotten more into the technical factors with our consultant. Robert Stevens from CSW is on the line, so he is available later on to ask, answer any very technical questions on this project. But really, due to some of the constraints and engineering feasibility of this project, considering there is no beach on the bottom of our bluff here, that we have serious seasonal constraints of constructing this, our $10.5 million we have of FHWA money is not going to get us our full project. And so, part of this update today is to talk about where we're at and how we get to that final project. We do have other grants that we've applied for with Boating and Waterways pending, but in general, the full build-out with the pretty picture isn't currently fiscally feasible. Next slide. So, from that alternative three, the full bluff protection, we developed alternative four, which it becomes a phase project. So really targeting the highest-risk areas, those areas where we saw the damage in 2023 first. And that has to do with, partially with the concurrent wall that we have that was built in 1997, and then also some of that erosion that you can see under that existing wall and also at the toe of the slope. Next slide, please. So the Phase 1 limits are pretty limited. It's, they're closest to our lower parking area, and that, again, that's where we experienced the failures. Next slide. Here's a better visualization of that area. Next slide, please. And this is a technical depiction of that area, which does include removing a portion of that existing wall. Next slide, please. So again, it's to address the most vulnerable bluff segment. It includes a shot creek tie-back wall that we can later expand to cover the entire run of the cliffside. Doing our rock slope protection, so the riprap on the bottom of, at the toe of the slope, using that existing rock, much of which has shifted since it was placed prior to 1997. And we actually haven't found a record of when it was first placed. So it's been there for quite some time. And then, having contingencies, if we are not being, we won't be able to be permitted additional rock. And then, in the meantime, while we are trying to get additional funds and move forward with the larger project, doing temporary pedestrian and bike safety measures, next slide. Because we all know that Cliff Drive is a relatively dangerous place to walk and bike if there's any kind of traffic at all. So, this temporary project, or this first phase project, would allow for some temporary measures, not a permanent beautiful walkway like we envisioned for our long-term plan, but definitely some bollards and improvements to separate our bikes and pads from the significant traffic we get on Cliff Drive. Next slide, please. So future phases would be extended stabilization, doing that nice Class 1 path, reconfiguring parking, doing native landscaping and overlooks, and that is really a mitigation that would be required of this project, also beautiful, but also required. And then, really having continuity with future phases. So really building this first phase to be allowed, to allow us to have a continuous look and feel and improvement through all phases. That said, the roadway cross-section that was provided in your packet, and I believe is on the next slide, is still up for modifications. So this was developed, given the amount of right-of-way we currently have. As you know, on the left side of the screen, that is, that parking area in the rail line is owned by the RTC. So our right-of-way here is very limited. There was quite a bit of conversation in our community outreach last weekend about the cantilevering to allow for the wider Class 1 path, and that is something that we have proposed currently in the most constrained areas of this project. But again, not something that is set in stone. Next slide, please. Also, again, there's those parking modifications in blue. Currently, we have perpendicular parking to accommodate within the right-of-way that we have. This overlook would move to parallel parking. Again, not something that, still something that we can discuss and develop over time, but this is what we currently have as a proposed conceptual plan. Next slide. So, in order to facilitate both the long-range plan and our currently funded, short of, excuse me, Phase 1 plan, there is required a local coastal program amendment. We were also, again, funded by the Coastal Commission to do a lot of the design development for this project. So thus far in this project, we have only spent federal funding and state grant funding. So part of that grant funding is to do these amendments. At this point, it's to facilitate this project specifically. So there is some cleanup. It takes out outdated references to Southern Pacific. It improves definitions and hazard policies to allow us to move forward with this project. And specifically, it updates those sections listed below. Slide, please. So the next steps for this, we did hold a community meeting that was relatively well-attended, a lot of good questions and discussions, both technical and conceptual, last week. The Planning Commission has an item scheduled for September 3rd, 4th, to discuss the LCP amendments to come for your consideration in October. Those will require to be certified as we move forward with our permitting, both for the Phase 1 project and the long-term project for Cliff Drive. Next slide, please. For the funding, again, we have our emergency funding from FHWA and our coastal, local coastal program grant funding that acts as a match to that federal funding. Though, as I reported last year, there are pretty tight timelines for the federal funding, with the support of our Caltrans local assistance. So Region 5 in San Luis Obispo, who are assigned to our agency, we've requested an extension for an additional year to request funds. That allows us to complete our environmental review, our LCP adoptions, and other items that are required by Caltrans and FHWA to request funding. And then again, future phases for build-out, one slide back, please, requires additional funding and design, potentially permitting not from Coastal Commission, but from other agencies. So our next steps are to approve our LCP funding and two other items that were on the past slide, but they, thank you, to, and then coming back to council to approve our project design when we're ready to move forward with the Phase 1 project, and then approve the construction contracts. Next slide. So in summary from this presentation, we are transitioning to a phase implementation due to funding and technical constraints, and moving forward with, to stabilize the most critical bluff areas. I think it's really important to say, by doing this smaller project, there's many benefits, one being lessons learned. Doing a much smaller project and making mistakes during that project keeps us from making mistakes on much larger projects. It also displays to the federal government that we are able to complete a project of this size successfully. And then, the LCP amendments will be coming soon in October to you all, and we'll continue to do our community and regulatory engagement. And with that, I and our consultant, Robert, are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We'll start at this end.
Start with me again. Okay. I think it's great that we're going to be able, that you got the funding and that we're going to be able to stabilize this bluff. I think Cliff Drive, having two-way traffic is a tremendous asset to the city. I do hope that we'll come up with a plan of how we're going to work with the community while this project goes on, because we've certainly heard a lot of what happened to the businesses in Seabright with the Murray Bridge closing. So we've got to be a little more thoughtful and proactive in making this happen. I did meet with staff, and they assured me that the plans for the top part of the project are not in concrete, that they're completely flexible, because I did have some concerns. You know, that's a rude way that people drive down, often tourist, and they look around, and having things like a 10-foot-wide lane there, I'm not certain it's the best answer. I'm not certain having parallel parking there makes sense. Maybe that space could be better used to providing pedestrian or bicycle more flexibility of getting down. So as long as, you know, we're really just talking about doing the technical work on the bluff face, and for me, for that work, I would really rely on what the engineers think is the absolute best plan, because, you know, I'm not a coastal engineer, then I think it will be nice to see that part of the project done and then have the rest of the project brought back to us, so we can have some additional input to ultimately what's going to happen up there. There may even be, as I said, if we got rid of the parking, some additional land that we could come up with a little different plan for the top of the bluff. So that's my comments.
Question, just for clarification. So, we're going, Phase 1 is going to be comprised mainly of working on the bluff face, but could also include these details of the bollards or, depending on cost, or?
The initial project would include putting in temporary bike and pad safety measures, yes.
Just during the work?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Like, temporary as in, not the final, not the broad project walkway improvements, but something that is meant to, right, not just during construction.
Okay, cool. Got it. Thank you.
Questions over here?
And looking at the area that's affected, is the Hooper stairs included in that part of the project?
Not in Phase 1.
And what would, just looking at that as coastal access, I know the report talks about it quite a bit, in and out, what are the thoughts around that? I mean, it seems like it's a, coastal access is huge and without those stairs there since '22 or whatever, in fact, your thoughts about that?
So it is included in the larger project to make something that is less likely to be blown out year after year. We did replace them after the storms of '22, and then they were knocked, in January, and then they were knocked out again in December and have been closed during that time. So, while it's not in the range to do during this particular Phase 1 project, it is in the longer-term project. And now that we've identified that, to have some kind of short-term improvement to have those stairs open in the interim is something Public Works is working on. We've floated a few things about having something that's removable or seasonal, just because those stairs have blown out, been blown out three times since I've been here, and I'm sure many times before.
Yeah, that's great to hear that. Just like questioning, not to get technical, just with taking a certain section of the project and developing it, is part of the analysis going forward, what does that potentially do to areas on each side? I mean, obviously, we like to do the whole project at one time, but does it raise concerns? Like, I was talking to the gentleman that were working on the wharf, and they were talking about the deflection off the wall and everything like that. And then, with this and changing of the riprap that's at the bottom, and it looks like, I thought in the drawing, I thought it showed that we were going to reset some of the riprap, but then add additional. Are we concerned what impacts that would have, like, on the wharf in the future or neighbors? Or does it create more of an issue up the hill? Is that all part of the analysis when this goes forward?
So yes, those are wave reflection and, right, endpoint erosion is something that's been analyzed. If you'd like a more detailed answer right now, what that analysis has been, Robert is on the line and can definitely give you more information. But if the question is just, has that been considered? Yes, it has.
Now be a part of, like, when the final project comes forward, there'll be some statements around how that's addressed, you know, I went just... I'm just concerned about... I think it's great that we're making progress on this and if it's a phased project, it's a phased project. But that we aren't creating other issues at the same time, would that be analyzed and be clearly stated to us? What does that look like and the potential risk?
Yes. So as part of the FHWA process, they make us do many, many studies. There's a sand erosion study and there's a study on the deflection. And those are all things that have to be submitted with our permit. So those studies have been done. I can definitely provide those. I believe they are finalized at this point.
They're finalized on what the potential risk is to neighboring or fighting properties or parcels or outside the scope of war?
Robert, would you mind answering that? I'm not... I did not write them. And so I'm not sure exactly how we address the neighboring properties directly.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Robert Stevens. I'm a consultant supporting the city on the design and analysis. From the preliminary standpoint, the rock slope protection that's placed at the bottom of the wall attenuates the wave energy, which reduces the wave reflection, which will protect the wharf from damage. There will need to be additional detailing developed during the development of the construction documents where the walls end to ensure that there's not any end erosion that occurs either to the wall or any of the adjoining properties. So that will be some additional dealing, likely some additional rock slope protection to attenuate the wave energy and maybe some additional excavation in the bluff to protect.
Perfect, thank you.
A question for Robert. Have we spoken with our partners in the county? They did the huge project at Pleasure Point a few years ago. There were some things that worked well, some things that didn't work well. And one of them was the wave reflection.
Yeah, so one of the... We actually have analyzed the wave reflection in this. And part of the reason for the addition of the rock slope protection at the bottom of the wall is it helps to attenuate the wave energy and break it up so we don't have that reflection. It's actually really interesting because if the rock wasn't there and the wall, concrete wall was not there and the waves were interacting with the existing bluff, there'd be quite a bit of wave reflection. So the rock actually helps attenuate that energy, minimizes that, and also prevents the erosion that could occur at the base of the wall, which would undermine it.
Right. Any further questions?
Seen one? We'll take it to public comment. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment staff and the consultant and everything. I attended the meeting. They've done an outstanding job and you should definitely compliment them because this is not an easy project. And we did have some excellent questions to add. The reason I'm coming up here to talk was the thing that was the most educational to me at the meeting was the fact that the riffraff at the bottom, we will be limited to how much we can replace it due to Coastal Commission regulations. And as the consultant said, the reason that the regulation was put into place was homeowners in Southern California were putting rocks in front of their houses on the beaches, which was public property, to keep the waves from coming up and hitting their houses. Okay? So the reason I wanted to come up was, I'd like to recommend to the city council that you request an exception or variance or whatever it is from the Coastal Commission to allow us to increase the height of that riffraff at the bottom of the wall. Because there will be no, as Robert pointed out in the meeting, there will be no public access to it anyway. And he's already discussed the positive value. I asked him in the meeting that obviously, the higher we could build that up, the more you're going to protect the wall over the long term. So my recommendation would be the city to take an action item to look at requesting the Coastal Commission to give us a variance to increase the riffraff at the bottom of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
So Linda Smith, once again. I also attended the meeting on the 12th and I was a little disappointed at the turnout because there were like six of us and six of them. There were a lot of good questions. There were a couple of engineers that were there that really had looked at the engineering. And I learned a lot about the whole project. And hats off to staff and the consultant for doing such a good job of analyzing... He's up there somewhere. For doing such a good job of analyzing and plotting this out. And it's common that construction has to be phased to, you know, because of funding and other things. And that didn't surprise me at all. But now that we're in a phased implementation plan, I think that there's a lot more we could know about the plan of the phases. Though, when you look at the Phase 1 piece of it, it's a little piece and it's kind of in the middle. So those adjacent properties are outside the scope. The parking lot's outside the scope. The stairs going down are outside the scope. And it's not clear if that gets brought into Phase 4, Phase 3, Phase whatever. So I just would encourage you to get a little bit more of an understanding of the four phases upfront before we, you know, jump in and go ahead with Phase 1 so that we can understand where we're going to find out what we don't know, which we know happens after you start construction. And make sure that there's a genuine engagement with those, the property owners that are adjacent because if they're doing anything with the toe of their properties, it's got to be in coordination and complementary to what we're doing with ours or the Coastal Commission's going to look at it and go, what's up? And it's my understanding that there are activities with those property owners today that are looking at doing things with the coastal permit process. So I really, really didn't see that that was a priority right now at this point in the project to really, you know, engage with those guys and share some plans, share the overall big-picture plan. So I just encourage you to ask for that at this point in the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do think it would be helpful to get a little information on how the phases are going to work and what's going to be included in each phase so we can sort of get a better idea of what the big picture is going to be. But that doesn't have to happen tonight. I mean, thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about engagement with the residents along the cliff? Has that happened and what came about it? I'm sure there has to have been some outreach to the residents.
So at the outset of this, we did convene a meeting of the residents and talk to them about the project and about potential public-private partnerships. We also shared with them direction we'd received from the Coastal Commission about how the project needed to incorporate kind of a holistic approach, public access, protecting infrastructure, native plants, view sheds, all of these things. And at the time, they indicated to us... Staff's understanding was that they were not interested in proceeding. And so we've moved forward with the project. We heard from them again, some of them again in December. We indicated at that time we would be happy to sit down and talk about phasing. So our doors open. We can reach out to them again and offer to sit down and talk about phasing, potential public-private partnerships. So I think there is a lot of opportunity for shared costs and experience here.
Yeah, I think that would be great because I think there's even one new property owner since you guys were talking. And so, you know, having communication there and seeing what those property owners want to do as well because the last thing they want to do is do a project that has any negative impact on anyone else.
It also reminds me of these classic undergrounding projects where, you know, you... City may be undergrounded in the downtown and then you go to the next property down and say, would you like to underground? You pay. You know, that's probably maybe one approach is, is we find out are they... Who's interested in participating? And can we connect it to what we're working on?
That sounds great.
Further deliberation?
I just want to say that I appreciate the protected bike lanes along Cliff because now I bike down there with my kids in our e-bikes and I'm going to bike back up tonight. And I'm very, very close to the cars, very close. So I'm excited about that. Thank you.
That's why I think we don't want to have to infotwight travel lanes there. You'll get really close to the cars.
With the earlier comments made about having this working session, would we be able to look at what, like, the different phases look? I mean, I know time is ticking away tonight, but like, as this working session, looking at the project that we're going to be doing and see, could we look at what all four phases look like even though Phase 1 is what we're talking about now? So we have a clearer vision for the community, what long-term range is going to look like?
We can definitely come back with what a phased approach could look like. Obviously, be very dependent on funding, but I think there is a way to kind of describe of what are the most vulnerable pieces and where we'd work on next. For example, Phase 1 is where we experienced the failure and why we got the money in the first place, right? But where is Phase 2 going to be and why is definitely something we can talk about. But as far as a timeline, obviously, it's dependent on funding.
Right, and that might help engage the neighbors to see what the overall vision of things could look like in whatever timeframe that really is. And it might just encourage some engagement more from them, knowing that there is a phased approach and what the steps are. I would just see if that can be something to add to our agenda at that meeting when we do have it.
Okay, we'll be looking for a motion. Keep doing what you're doing.
Sounds good.
Great, that'll bring us to item F, Park at Rispin Mansion, project update. I walk over and look at that piece of property every day, so I'm going to go to the bathroom real quick, but we can get started.
Mayor and the Vex Mayor walked away.
Sounds like...
Okay.
Looks like it. I thought Joe meant like he would just continue without him. Yeah, Joe meant, he sees it all the time, continue.
Great, looks like everybody's back. We'll pick up with the Park at Rispin Mansion.
All right. Still me. So for anyone who may not be aware, the Park at Rispin Mansion is a property the city owns opposite of the library on Wharf Road. It has been a mini, mini, mini mere effort to restore, repurpose a historic site and turn it into a public park. So the purpose of tonight's item is to provide guidance on hardscaping, which we did recently visit, but we're revisiting again, and a landscape strategy to get this park open to the public. Next slide, please. So as you may recall, this project was developed over many years. I think the most recent full plan was developed in 2015. And when we went to bid this project partially with state park grant funds in 2023, we bid it with a reduced scope. So really, it was to get something open to the public. And a lot of the fancier items, such as a bocce ball court and some artwork, was not included in that project that we bid. So items such as grading and historical reconstruction of some of this site, civil improvements to make it accessible, that was the project that was bid. You may recall that we did not receive any bids on that project. So we did a negotiated contract with a local contractor, Betts Works, for $949,000. We did a change order earlier in the project for our underground and ADA work. And then we had some significant delays due both to weather and to PG&E utility connections, which were resolved either last week or the week before. Next slide, please. So items that are completed are the historic restoration. If you haven't checked it out through the fence, they are really lovely. The amphitheater and some exterior wall modifications. We cut down the wall and put up a right iron fence, pathways and concrete in some of those ADA upgrades. And the lighting is complete. Outcoming deliverables are some additional fencing, site furnishings, concrete on the lower patio area, of which I have a picture of in a following slide. Particularly, that was in that first change order for ADA accessibility to our new amphitheater facility. And then irrigation and limited landscaping. Other items that we had talked about previously that weren't in the budget, such as small amenities, such as fountain emitters and some planters, a game table, sundial, were able to be added via our Public Works perks budget that we have for general supplies. Next slide, please. So items from the get-go that were excluded due to cost, particularly were an arbor and a bocce ball court, a public art installation, particularly in the fountain, which is unfunded. However, we have submitted a grant to the National Endowment for the Arts for that project. The fountain, as many have noticed, was temporarily filled for safety. There was a fall hazard that we were told by the building department needed to be mitigated to allow for public access. So that has been filled and is able to be unfilled when we're ready to do that art project. And then most recently, we were here in May to talk about additional hardscape for a loop pathway, sundial plaza, stair landing and fountain, of which I have a picture on on a following slide. Recently, our contractor on the site advised us that he would not be able to perform that stamped concrete, particularly around the fountain due to the site condition of it being circular and just general costs, labor costs were more than what we had budgeted for this project. Next slide, please. So the area that we are talking about for a decision this evening are those areas in green. So the upper part of your screen is those ADA improvements to the amphitheater. The loop trail and that area that connects the trail in the middle is already poured and completed. And so we're talking about the sundial plaza, which is that geometric shape there in the middle of the loop, the area around the fountain, and then the landing of the staircase. Next slide, please. So that is that completed loop pathway. This is the lower patio area that we're talking about for that ADA accessibility piece. Next slide. So these are pictures of those areas that were shown in green on that previous slide. So again, from left to right is the landing of the staircase, around the filled fountain, and then the sundial plaza. Next slide, please. So we have a few options for hardscape. So stamped concrete still is an option. However, that is a very, a much higher cost than anticipated and not currently within the project budget that we have. One item that would be in the project budget is stamped asphalt. However, stamped asphalt doesn't look quite like pavers. I have pictures in following slides as stamped concrete does. The reason we had talked about stamped concrete in the previous discussion is that it does mimic pavers with a much lower cost than pavers. So those are still two options that we can pursue. An additional option is filling those areas around the sundial and the fountain with decomposed granite, which at the very start of bidding this project was the proposed treatment. And then we have some pavers that are historical pavers from the original site that we do not have enough to do the whole thing in pavers but could do the landing in the short term. And that is all, the DG plus those pavers in that one location are within the project budget. It gives us the opportunity to put pavers in those other areas in the future, which is part of that 2015 concept plan and gives us the ability to do it over time. There's also a potential for community involvement in there, fundraising, a potential program... There's also a potential for community involvement in there, fundraising, a potential program if council wishes to move forward with that concept. Next slide, please. So just to give you a visual, this is stamped asphalt. The area on the left is actually in front of the Home Depot in town, so you can see it does fade over time. The area on the right is something that is newly installed in a park. So you can see, you can do different geometries with that kind of stamped asphalt treatment. Next slide, please. Similarly, you can do different configurations with stamped concrete. We have that at the library currently. And again, you can also make those to look like pavers, color them. There's many options. That is just a very high labor-intensive cost for this project. Next slide. And then finally, we have pavers. As you may all be familiar with the development of the library, there was a fundraiser and pavers engraved in front of our Capitola branch library. And then that picture there on the right is of pavers that currently exist on the mansion site. Slide. So switching gears a bit to the landscaping, so this is the initial plan from 2015. It currently far exceeds any budget we have for both installation but also maintenance. We do have two new staff members for parks maintenance in the public works department. This particular layout would require a full-time person at the site. And so it's very, at this point, just not reasonable for this department to maintain. The current, within the scope of our current project, is minimal installation of landscaping along Wharf Road and some of our newly poured concrete features, and then to do some ground cover with stubbed irrigation lines for potential to do landscaping in the future. Next slide, please. In addition to ground cover for slope stabilization. So something that has been floated at the site for a very long time, or no, I'm sorry, not for a very long time. The pavers idea has been around for a long time. Something that has been floated more recently for this site is to develop a downplay plan for this site and have future planting areas and potentially partnerships with other organizations around town to do either and/or the installation and maintenance of landscaping on the site. I've heard rumors that somebody took some original rose bushes from this site and have them in their backyard somewhere in town. So there's many potential things that we can do in this area in partnership with others. There are these green areas on the site plan temporarily in the fountain or permanently in those middle areas, and then depending on if we ever want to move forward with that bocce ball court in that larger area on the left. Currently, again, that we are stubbing out irrigation there and would apply mulch as needed for erosion control. But if council wishes us to move forward with pursuing a partnership for landscaping, we can prepare that area for planting in the short term. It's a different type of soil mix than you put down rather than just throwing mud chips on it. So our budget impact tonight really depends on council direction. Lower-cost options we can do in the short term with the funding we have. The higher-cost options such as the stamped concrete or try to install pavers now would be something that's beyond our current budget. And then also looking for direction on a volunteer landscaping effort. While doing volunteers greatly reduces the cost, it isn't, it's still an impact. That's still something that needs to be developed and managed over time. Next slide, please. So the suggested approach staff would put out there this evening is to move forward with putting in the D post con granite and then the pavers on the landing. It really gives the opportunity to do the fully realized plan from that 2015 development that had a lot of public outreach, a lot of people still remember that plan very well, and gives us the opportunity over time to really execute the plan as it's envisioned. Staff, if directed by council, could move forward with looking into a paper donation program and return to council to discuss that in detail. Also, if you give us direction to move forward with partnering for landscaping, we can issue an RFP to see what agencies would be interested. And I believe that is my last slide. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
Just one question. I know our efforts with the library, the pavers was successful. That was ran by the city or was that?
So that was a partnership, the friends of the library kind of took the lead on it. It ended up, it was interesting. I think we have a friend here. We spent a lot of time, I think, worrying about it at the city end, like how was it going to work? It was going to be difficult. It ended up being relatively turnkey.
Okay. Yeah, that's cool. And then in regards to landscaping, like volunteer installed, would this be like a community garden? Or like, would it be up to the volunteers that would be doing the planting? Or did they maintain it? Like, how do you envision that working?
That's a great question, and really it would be a collaboration because we wouldn't want to show up off a fully planned-out thing that they either can't want to, can't maintain or don't want to maintain. Don't want it to be a free-for-all.
Yeah, yeah.
So it would, we would do the RFP with something like, we would develop a plan and an agreement over time and see who's interested.
Okay, great, thank you.
Right, you have a question? Sorry. In looking at the project site, is there any other areas of the project that have been value engineered out that we should be talking to or about tonight that might need to be addressed in the future? Or, you know, just to kind of bring this whole thing back to, I know the target date's open soon. I was just wondering, there's other areas like repair on the walls and stuff like that that might not be in the scope now.
So the major parts that are in the scope, again, are the public art pieces. There's the fountain, but there was also some public art envisioned for the building itself. There is the arbor, which was around that left side of the loop there, and then the bocce ball court in the middle, and then the extensive landscaping. Those were the major items that were value engineered out of this project.
I'm talking, so like on the exterior wall, like on Wharf, there's substantial damage still to that wall. Is that part of this project, not part of this project? And is not, have we looked at incorporating that? So just where my concerns come from is this, like, we've all talked about this project's been ongoing for a long time and is investment of like a million dollars of city's money. And to have it at a certain level that we get to that is acceptable and is what the community thought it was supposed to be. And we have to do some, I think, work on educating them on why we couldn't afford all the planting and remind people of that. But I was just personally concerned about the condition of the wall and some of those historical features. I guess if you want to refer to those as that on that wall that haven't been addressed now, or is that, is that part of the project and it will be?
So the modifications to the wall are complete. So where the scope of that particular item started was where they cut out pieces of the wall and then put up the fencing. So that doesn't go all the way down up Wharf Road. So where they started the cut is where they started the improvements. And that was what was in the scope of the project.
But I think we are looking at getting pricing to repair that, particularly as you move north on Wharf Road there. There's a pretty visible section of damaged wall facing the library. We're looking at getting.
Correct, we're getting costs for that, but it was not part of the original scope.
The original scope, from the original.
The one we did, yes.
The one, not the one we, the one that we, that we executed a contract on, right?
Correct.
I mean, the original bid had all the planting, redoing everything, right? Yeah, I would just, I would like to, I don't know how those numbers come back to us or if those are decisions. I just, again, like to see the project open as complete as possible. And if those numbers are attainable and make sure we have a wall that's perfect up to a certain point and we draw this line and then it's not going down the rest of it, that's just a concern of mine. And that's all the questions I have at this time.
Oh, I just had one question. So I mean, I'm assuming before this opens, having just walked up there recently, you know, there's a lot of down branches and tree debris and all of that. There's certainly a plan to go in and sort of clean up the site before.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
So no further questions, I'll open up to public comment. Welcome.
Good evening, council, good evening, staff. Gail Ortiz, been working on, I know I've told you this before, but I'm working on the Rispin since 1980. These are the buttons that we made for the Friends of the Rispin Estate back in the 90s when we were all going to the site and uncovering bricks and uncovering stones. And we dug up the pillars and underneath the pillars, they had, as the foundation for the pillars, it was old walks, cooking walks. That was what they poured the foundation. They put the walk down and then they put the concrete in it and they put the pillar, the rose arbor pillars. And I just thought I'd give you a little crazy history of Rispin. Who knew, probably the nuns did that, who knows? We do have the roses, we know which one, which they are. We're going to look for the gal that took all the cuttings. This wasn't, the concept for this garden was an historical garden. So it's not like normal municipal landscaping. We need to keep in mind that this was, you know, we want to keep this historical in some ways. And although I think I agree that the original plan is pretty fleshed out and pretty unattainable for us, I do think that that landscape architect, Michael Arnon, would be willing to scale that back. And we can possibly get the public to help us plant that and maintain different areas of that. I think if we were to, if the council felt like it, we were to get a committee going with one or two council members, a staff member, members of the community, to make a recommendation to the council about the direction we would go in to get the paver program going, get the community organizations going. I, you know, I think we both, we always thought about them all doing their own plan. But in the long run, I think it'd be better to just do the plan that we had hours and hours of public meetings about, that went to the planning commission, went to the city council, everybody approved it. Let's, let's riff off of that plan. We've already spent the money on that plan. I think we can tweak that plan a little bit and do really well by these public groups that could very easily. And we can probably get money, we can probably get donations from nurseries in town as well. I think that there is, there's some major donation possibilities. We've seen it with the Wharf, we've seen it with the, with the library. There's, there are people who want to contribute to this community. So I would encourage going for option three, doing the decomposed granite. And anytime you can use an old, something old that came out of that Rispin, let's use it. I'm kind of wondering what's in the courtyard. There's probably other things at the courtyard that we could use that from there. So, so I encourage you to use the number three, the landscaping plan that's already been executed and to form a committee, and I would be most happy to serve on that committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm here to talk about the fountain. I've been on the Art and Cultural for a very long time, and that has been a dream of the Art and Cultural is to do the mosaic for that fountain. I have to say, it was very disheartening when we heard it was filled with dirt and going to be planted with plants. To us, that meant we had no hope, especially when there were other ways you could have covered it for safety reasons without filling it with dirt. So I just want to make it clear that the Art and Cultural, and me personally, from being here that long, would love to keep that mosaic as a possibility, whatever it takes, and not just plant plants, making it feel like that's going to be the permanent of it.
Thank you. So no further public comment, we'll bring you back for council deliberation. Start on this side.
Can you bring up those options again? Thank you. So with, I guess the first option, I think that's the best way for us to proceed. Do we have enough of the existing pavers to finish off the one entry area that were saved from the project?
So it's my understanding we have enough pavers in the garage of the building to do the landing between the, between the staircases, so that like purple rectangle there.
Great. And then what about the thoughts of, you know, prepping all the soil? We, it sounds like we stubbed out for some irrigation and re-engaging a community group together and letting them work off the existing plans, modify them to a level that I think would be acceptable to you as the public work director, that we would be able to have our additional staff that we have maintaining, but also understand that it might have to be a partnership with the community. What are your thoughts about that, just overseeing that, not overseeing that, that process, but long-term?
I think that's something we can definitely achieve if we, if the desire, if there was a community group out there that really wants to contribute the long-term maintenance, there should be an agreement with, associated with that, both for liability reasons, but also just to have some kind of commitment. But generally, yes, that method of getting to something that's planted permanently is achievable.
Okay, that's all I have.
I personally like the third option with the decomposed granite and working with a community group to fundraise for future pavers. I remember, you know, when the library project was going and we were, as community members, able to purchase blocks and imprint and be a part of the project and be a part of the community. I thought that was really cool and exciting. So my, my preference would be option three and engaging with the public and having community members really take ownership of, of this historic place and the historic nature of, of all it represents.
Well, I'm pretty much in agreement. I think that, you know, I think the Rispin is a very wonderful asset for the city of Capitola and understand that, you know, there's not the funding for it to be how we ultimately want it to be right now. But I do think it's important, as Gail mentioned, that, you know, we, we look at sort of the landscaping plan and definitely has to be scaled back, but try and keep the elements in it that are, you know, historic to the site, like the Rose Garden and some other things. And if we do that, then we can build on it as time goes and continue to have it, you know, be sort of its historical representation. I like the idea of, you know, doing the pavers and the donation program. And I like the idea of, you know, trying to come up with some sort of community group that's going to help with the landscaping and the maintenance of that. I do think we have to be thoughtful about it and do like an RFP. So we're dealing with one group that's going to have, you know, responsible people that we can go to and work with. You know, I don't think we want to turn it open and have it like a community garden or anybody can just come. It's going to have to be fairly structured and organized. So I think, I think we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, I'm in agreeance with that. I'm, I'd be stoked on the paver efforts. I think that would be really cool to get some involvement. And yeah, the roses sound good. If we can get that community involvement, I'm all for that. Thanks.
I would be in agreement with all of that. I've lived in that neighborhood for 30 years and has done nothing but a lot of work and a nice job for the city. It'd be great to get it open. I think we build it and people will come and we can do all kinds of great things. So we're looking for a motion.
I think a point of clarification is, which I was talking about was, I don't know if everybody understands the project, but at the landing, there's a specific smaller area. Jessica, what's about the pros and cons size of just the landing?
Not sure off the top of my head, sorry.
Ten by ten. It's a very small piece. And I mean, I think having a piece of the, I think the donor paver plan is a great way to go, but I think a part of that project to use the, the bricks that were there, that were intended in the original design, might be a nice way to set the tone of the project of like, that we are continuing to, you know, do as of, going forward. So I'm just, you know, so making a motion going forward. You know, I think the donor brick program would be great. I think in the community outreach, but at the landing, we would use existing bricks that are on the site to put that into the, like the opening as we, and move forward with the DG installation, I guess, as a temporary basis. And then look, I guess, we would look to the city staff on how we can engage with a community program. And hopefully, as I explained, I think the one at the library went extremely quick. And hopefully that, you know, if there's enough funding raised quick enough, that project would come online real fast. So that's what I would like to see. I was a little bit more than motion, sorry. So motion would be to proceed with a community paver program for dedication, having the existing bricks put into the landing for the city to reach out and develop an RFP kind of outline for a community venture and to bring in a community group to decide what the final direction would be and if there's opportunity for fundraising for the garden areas and stuff like that.
I don't think we need a formal, but I think we're all in agreeance on that direction.
Great. Sounds like we're all in agreement. Thank you very much. Item G, amend fiscal year 2025-26 city fee schedule.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Mayor, Council. Next slide, this first, this next item is the fiscal year, an amendment to the fiscal year 2526 fee schedule. As you may recall, we adopted the fees, fee schedule back in June of 2025. This was following the citywide fee study that we had completed last fall. During that fee study, we evaluated cost recovery levels for all the different fees that we charged and had inadvertently increased the sidewalk signs, the encroachment permit and actual permit for the sign to a total of $322. In the past, we've tried to target, like maintain $100 for that. It's a $500 sign. It doesn't make sense for the permits to be $322. Next slide, please. So what we're proposing is to, the encroachment permit, reduce it to 50. It was previously, before the fee study, I want to say 44, 45. Reduce it from the 38 back to the $50. The sign permit, I think was 78. We increased it to 84, but again, we're trying to hold the $2 to $100. We're suggesting that we keep that at, or recommending that $50. So those were the two amendments we're proposing to the actual fees. We'd also like to do, add some clarifying language around junior guard regionals competition. We charge, the city charges a fee of $115 for the competition, and that's really intended to recover the city's cost for getting all of the junior guards down to the competition. It doesn't include the fee charged by United States Lifeguard Association for gold level membership, which is required to actually participate in the competition. So we just want to add some language in there that the $115 charged by the city does not include the USLA fee. Next slide, please. So with that, the recommended action is to propose the resolution amending the fee schedule for fiscal year 2526, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, questions? Out of curiosity, what is the fee for the gold?
$40.
Thank you. Opening it up to public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring you back for deliberation.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution amending fee schedule for fiscal year 2526.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us back to closed session items. I'm sorry. Consent. D and J.
All right, me again. Round this out real quick, because I know it's a late hour. I did, since we had a little bit of time while you were discussing them all, prepared some presentations, because I know it's easier to follow when you have something on the screen, but I'll go through it relatively quickly. So the first item is the ADA Transition Plan. This project, in its current iteration, has been on the books for quite some time. The, is this the first slide?
Yep.
The purpose for the ADA Transition Plan is to evaluate not only our infrastructure, but also our programs and services throughout the city for accessibility purposes. This is called the Transition Plan. They were mandated in the early 90s with the approval of the ADA, and it's a living document that progresses and, and changes over time. Next slide. So the first ADA Transition Plan for the city was done in the early 90s, so in 1994. And again, they are meant to be reviewed and updated with the infrastructure you have and with new accessibility codes. So a partial review was done in 2010. However, in between 1994 and 2010, we had increased facilities. So in 2017, we did this effort again with a comprehensive of all of our facilities, all of our current programs, and then to do the new public outreach for that item. This went through several staff members. It got delayed over the COVID-19 pandemic, and so we picked this up again in fiscal year 2425. So those facility evaluations included in the ADA Transition Plan are originally from 2017. They were updated in our database that we use to track these improvements. They might not have been updated all the way in the facility reports. Next slide, please. So again, since 2017, there is a brand new library, a brand new Wharf. The community center is under renovation and is addressing all of the, all the items there that are in that annex for corrections. And then there have been multiple right-of-way upgrades, increased sidewalks, grinding down sidewalk lips, many accessibility improvements done between 2017 and adopting this plan today. Next slide, please. So a citywide survey was completed in 2025. There was one done closer to 2017, but we knew we were adopting this program now. So we, again, did another community-wide survey in January 2025 in a community meeting at the Capitola Library. We did outreach to social media, mailers, posters, all those good things to get a public input. And they are also notably available and accessible, so wide print, audio formats upon request. Next slide, please. Again, it's to evaluate not only infrastructure, but policies and procedures of all of our facilities, park buildings, right-of-way. The right-of-way chapter is extensive because it is every street sidewalk in town. And then identifies those barriers and recommends actions, puts a cost to those actions, and then gives us guidance into how to incorporate them into future projects. Next slide, please. So they are also prioritized, due mostly to severity, to level of impact, like getting entry, entry into a building, feasibility of doing them on their own, cost effectiveness, and then just general impact. As part of our summer intern we had this summer, we had her do a lot of the right-of-way work and look specifically for community impact. And then we use this to identify opportunities to bundle with other projects, such as our roadway projects, such as building renovations, to really knock out all of these improvements over time. Next slide. Again, it's organized into multi-year phases, as is required by the ADA, though we are not held to completing any specific barrier at any given time, just to show that, we are just required to show that we are moving forward with this. Use the facility ports for us to provide to contractors, for us to use as internal checklists when we're doing these projects, and also to track our project, progress over time. Next slide. Again, we use these as standalone projects, but also as projects that incorporated to other facility projects we have going on, and then have a documentation of addressing these. There's also the ability, we updated some of our internal policies to meet current ADA codes, and also developed a online portal for specific barrier complaints. Next slide, please. So again, the fiscal impact, we are not required to do any of these projects at any given time, but we do have a cost and a general schedule to move forward in implementing removal of these barriers. They are implemented over time into the city's budget and really have a mix of funding sources depending on what those barriers are. And so the recommended action is to adopt this plan dated January 6 of 2025, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
The only question, and the reason why I wanted to pull that, I thought it was really important document for us to just review and to highlight. I think some, Council Westman said earlier, just about how many seniors we have, and so there's, there's some challenge at ADA. I'd like to see, like, in the future, when we have this sort of plan, I know we do a lot of in-depth study and like looking at our PCI index and stuff, and it's always looking at paving. And I just think going forward to having these kind of merge, not together, but looking at how maybe, as much we look at road conditions, there are going to be some ADA transition issues that I think could be maybe even more important as than for those. And so how, how can we merge those two together and looking at like with Measure D funds that we have for it, so are we able to use that to address ADA issue compliant things? And is there a separation there? And, and I think going forward with the, I think we're going to have a new way of looking at PCI projects and stuff like that, how those intertwine altogether?
So there's a lot of answers to that question. I'll try to kind of categorize them, but so when we do our capital projects, so like when we resurfaced a Capitola Road last year, year before, we hit all of the curb ramps to make them accessible. That was part of our ADA Transition Plan that is now marked off as completed. So we do look at those when we're doing similar work. We were doing concrete work on that already, so that was easy to add in. Sometimes when you do roadway projects, if you remove a certain layer of street, you're required to do that, whether you want to or not.
Right.
And then when we go out for grants, particularly for roadway projects, those, addressing those barriers make us more competitive. So not only should we be doing it, and it checks off a box in multiple areas, it just makes us more competitive for funding generally. So this is a formalized plan, something that's documented, something we can track over time. But whenever we do road projects that involve any concrete work, we do look into accessibility.
Yeah, I think, I think it's great, but sometimes I think we look at a PCI on just what the roads rank at, or what the scoring is. It might be bad, but at the same time, if there's ADA issues on a certain road, that might be able to weigh in at the same time. So it's not just road conditions, it might be some challenges in there. And it's just a question, this is a living document that gets updated internally by staff, or does it consultant?
It gets in, we have a very large, or I think it's an access file, that gets updated internally by staff.
Okay. Thank you for the overview.
That was sort of my question about how often does, does it get updated constantly? I mean, like, we're adopting the plan and things have happened since that plan was written in January. So how does the plan?
As they're completed, they get updated internally. And then when we do a refresh of the plan, which depending on the agency, can be every five to 10 years, you update like the actual forward-facing document.
Thank you.
One of the other ways I would, I was thinking might be helpful to answer that question is, is how, we're talking about doing our, developing our five-year CIP, and, you know, we just have a transition plan, we're working on our climate action plan, we just approved a plan today to move forward with the ATP. All of these are sort of feeder documents for the five-year CIP. So there may be standalone ADA Transition Plan projects that end up making it onto the CIP at some point, in addition to improvements that we may talk about for roadways in general. So I don't know if that helps at all, but I think these can all be kind of feeder documents in terms of the overall priority of where we, where we want to put our money in any given year.
Great. No further questions? I'll take it to public comment. Public comment, bring it back for deliberation.
I'll make a motion to adopt the city of Capitola's ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan dated January 6, 2025.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take us to item J, Community Center Patio Improvement Contract Award.
Rounding out the night, last item. All right, it's a good one.
Oh, I thought you, I'm sorry, I thought you had a.
Oh, I, I do.
Do we want, do we want a presentation on this, or do you want to ask?
I just had a couple of, I just had some questions. I thought you had, I was going to cut you short if you had a presentation.
Oh, yeah, no, we can go real quick. Just, so everyone's on the same page. So as you know, in June, you all approved plans for not only the patios, but also the Treasure Cove Playground and restroom renovation. When we were awarded additional funding from CDBG, and so this award, awarded 3.2 from CDBG covers those items specifically. Next slide, please. So the patio is a complement to the renovation project currently underway. It's new hardscape, decorative painting, lighting, landscaping, irrigation, really to make it a more inviting space for the community center, for programming, and then also to connect to the rest of Jade Street Park. As required, we advertised this in July for 30 days. We had a pre-bid meeting. We're nine contractors. Those are our prime contractors, so people eligible to bid for the project attended. And we opened bids at the end of July, of which we received two. And SSB Contracting, who is the current contractor on the renovation project, was our lowest responsive bidder. Next slide, please. Just a quick update on our other Jade Street projects. We have our playground project that we opened bids for, was that last week, week before? We reserve, we see four. We're currently reviewing all the bids for, make sure that they are complete, and a plan on bringing those for council to approve next meeting. The restroom project now has a building permit and should be out to bid shortly and award for October 2024. Construction of all three of these projects will continue to the summer of next year. Next slide. So just a review of our funding sources for this project, which there are many. We have our general fund, our grant, supported by Assemblymember Addis from the CNRA, a general fund from the playground that got us our plans and specs, and then our fundraising with our Friends of County Parks. And there are two CDBG funds for a total funding amount for those projects of $10,805,000. Next slide, please. Of which $10,720,000 is currently programmed. We keep the rest of the money for contingency, because you never know what you're going to dig up. But this is in your agenda packet. There is a breakdown. All of these are current known numbers, other than the playground, which will be updated when we come back for the award for that and the restroom. But the numbers included in your agenda packet include contingencies, and we fully expect for those numbers, our bid numbers to be within those budgets. Next slide, please. So the next steps for this complex is to award this patio contract, and then the playground project in two weeks. We have a quarterly report due to you all in September as requested, where our construction management team will be here to also present a contract for our restrooms in October, and then ongoing construction, which is very exciting. It's moving along real well. Next slide, please. So there's the recommended action, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Further questions?
So normally, when these kinds of projects come up, working in other cities, I'm sort of familiar with, you know, it's an open public bid process that we receive information on all of the bids that came in. Because I've actually been in cities where people have complained because, you know, about the bidding process. Is it possible for us to get on these other parts of this project, the actual bids that they, they come in and that information included in the staff report?
Yep, absolutely. We'll do so in the future.
Thank you.
No question. I just appreciate pulling the project. I think it's just great, at a project at this level, to see the overview and where we're going. Just what was the estimated target number for the, the courtyard was?
Million dollars.
And so the $55,000 over budget, you're fine with where that? And so the $55,000 over budget, you're fine with where that is in a contingency? And I know we're going to have a presentation coming up. Overall change orders, are there any, has there been anything that hasn't been identified or that should be, that we're concerned about as of this time, or are change orders relatively low at this point?
Relatively low. We have had some. We had a big asbestos issue at the very beginning of this project, and then there's always minor change orders, doors that need to be replaced that weren't in the project plans, things like that. And so that will be detailed out for your review at 25th, 27th, second meeting in September.
You've come to that $55,000, just won't be compromised when we get to the playground or if we get to the bathroom project, that we won't have to be looking at scope changes or anything? Thank you.
All in agreement of the correction, execution?
Can I make a motion? Or no?
Public comment.
Oh, I'm jumping right ahead. Public comment. Seeing none?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract for the community center patio improvements project with SSB Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $1,055,000, and to authorize the Public Works Department to issue notices to proceed upon final contract execution.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great work, everybody. We'll see everybody next September 11th at 6:00 PM. Adjourned.